Good evening. I like to call the regular meeting of Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Roll call Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Vice President Bogus?
Present.
Commissioner Shu?
Here.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Here.
President Lam?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, before the board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session. Items listed in the agenda. There'll be a total of five minutes for speakers. Are there any speakers for public comment?
Seeing none in person.
Seeing no virtual public speakers.
Okay, this time I will recess for closed session.
SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here. HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot streamtext dot net slash player? Question mark event equals SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comments to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. That is the only thing people should be doing in the Q and A box. This is for our ASL services, so please no comments or questions. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter in the board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelists and enable the attendees' video. Any member of the public may email their comments with the agenda item identified in the comment to Board Office at SFUSD dot edu by two P M. The day of the meeting. If they do not wish to make the comment during the board meeting, the comments will be read into the record. Translation Services, you can go ahead. Language?
Thank you. Thank you. SFUSD offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please add the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the pin number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes. El Distrito Escolar Nificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave. Seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis. Nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral o tecla gato. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Chairperson. Good evening. 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 Thank you.
Second, translation services.
Thank you. Good evening. We will continue closed session after reconvening, after coming to open session. So at this time, I like to officially reconvene to open session. Opening items, land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatash Aloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatash Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatash community by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Now I'd like to go to opening items to approval of board minutes, regular meeting of October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and special meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any edits or corrections? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Review of agenda items. This evening I am moving category J discussion item number one, update on superintendent one hundred and seventeen day entry plan to follow directly after category G action items. One, vision values, goals, and guardrails. Next, we have superintendent's report, including the empower update from A and M. Like to call on Dr. Wayne.
Thank you, Board President Lam. Good evening, everybody. This is my superintendent's report. And as I shared at the previous board meeting, recognizing the really crisis we're in with Empower and needing an intervention that I committed to providing an update as part of my report for each meeting. So I'm going to start with an update on our empower intervention. And if you go to the second slide.
I'm supposed to be on a?
Okay. Yeah, as we're working to resolve the issues on the backend, I recognize one of the most frustrating issues has been just how we've engaged with our employees. And I hear daily and receive emails about the fact that people have a concern or an issue, and they haven't been able to talk to anybody, and they get an automated response. And even when I visit schools, I hear about those concerns. And so while, again, while we're working on on the system issues, we want to make sure we're being responsive to our staff. And so starting tomorrow, we are going to have a call center that's open nine, from nine to five every day to be able to talk to a live person. And this is a place to make sure we capture the concern really clearly, address what we can, but these are where this is in our all hands on deck efforts. We're going to have people from different departments who may not be able to resolve it, but we'll be able to track it and and make sure that it doesn't feel like that the request for help has just gone into thin air. And so we did a soft launch and already have had sixty phone calls that we've been able to engage with our employees. And again, just trying to make it easier and and, you know, a district that values relationships. And so again, people know that they're talking to a real person. So I'll be on the line tomorrow morning to field cause myself because it really is everybody. I'm expecting everybody to step up and help out in this intervention. Also provide, we've provided various clinics, and we have an upcoming tech sheltered annuities in-person clinic. And then we also have office hours for supervisors and clerk. And we're redesigning our system so that we can get have that help desk system be more functioning. And then the reason we're taking this, these steps is we brought in Alvarez and Marshall. In the first phase, they were assessing and diagnosing the issue and then going to firm, provide, but people power and expertise to respond to the issues. And if you go to the next slide, they had shared this last time, and I think the key data to see here is one, just how many open tickets we've had that may represent an issue and also any questions that people may, may have. And then at the, on the far right, you see how many impacted employees we have. And so no wonder it's so disruptive for our system when we have almost a third of employees who have tickets in that are waiting for, again, might just be a response to a question, but are waiting to hear from us. And then lastly, it's gotten to this place because each month more tickets are coming in than we're closing. And so that's what we need to change immediately while we're working on the systemic fixes. So I'd like to turn it over to Aaron Covington from A and M to briefly share now that they've been here for a little bit more than a month, their key recommendations, as well as the assessment of our system. So go ahead, Aaron. And go to the next slide, please.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Our update will be brief tonight. We completed our four-week triage phase. And through that phase, through our data analytics, our interviews with key members of the organization and participation in ongoing Empower SF meetings. We observed really that there's a lot of, there's a lot of effort being put into this resolution of these issues. There's a series of complex sets of meetings. Staff are devoted to, you know, resolving issues on an incident-by-incident basis. As a result of all these meetings and as a result of the, of, of the one-on-one interactions, it doesn't leave much capacity to really address systemic root cause, do conduct root cause analysis and address systemic issues. And so they're short-staffed, they're understaffed. There's a new approach that needs to be taken to address this situation. And so with that, the, the full realities of spending four weeks here, I think, really made us land on a new way or a new organ, new way to reorganize the effort to triage the efforts. So with that, we've come up with a new corrective action plan. If we want to go to the next slide. This is, I know quite a bit of detail, but really we are recommending a fundamental reorganization of the triage effort that really groups the individuals or the efforts involved in the triage effort or the corrective action plan in six distinct teams. One team is focused on case management, so responding to the Zen Desk tickets, making sure that they see the ticket all the way through to closure. There's a second team that is focused on root cause analysis. So oftentimes a ticket comes in and it says, my pay was incorrect. Well, that requires a level of analysis, research, conversations, emails to really understand, well, what caused that incorrect pay? So that root cause team will get into the first, second, third order, nth order of the, the issue that's causing, or the item that's causing that payroll issue. From there, we will have two distinct teams that are focused on process and system fixes. So that root cause will help us to understand what is the driver of that incorrect pay. And then the process and systems teams can say, all right, well, it's a configuration with Empower SF, or it's a breakdown in our process. Let's redefine the process. Let's redefine the roles and responsibilities associated with it. And then subsequently roll out those changes. There's also an analytics team. So we've been able to really get in in the last four weeks and look at past payrolls, look at the Zen Desk tickets. Deep analytics is critical to the overall support of this corrective action plan, and so that will be a key piece in this process. So we, we intend to move forward, we hope to work with the school district to move forward with this corrective action plan. One other of, item of note outside of this corrective action plan is that we do not recommend abandoning Empower SF at this point. So the school district has put a lot of time and effort into this system at this point. And we actually recommend the redeployment of resources to address the root cause, to address the case management tickets. And that is a better use of time and resources to, to fix the, the people, process, and system issues associated with Empower SF versus abandoning the system.
Thank you, Erin, and I appreciate your addressing that. It's a question that many people have had. It's just, you know, it's going back to the old system. Wanting to resolve the issues and as much as, you know, I think we want to resolve them immediately. I understand going back to the previous system is going to raise, you know, different issues and but we are committed to following through on this. And so we know many people are here tonight, I think, to speak to Empower. Again, our commitment is responding to concerns. So if you're here to speak and you also have a concern, we do have a table set up outside for people to go to, to share their concerns, and we have staff here who can possibly help address them. If you go to the next slide, and thank you, Erin. And also this month is our National Bowling Prevention, Prevention Month. And we're having our schools engage in the Great Kindness Challenge to encourage students to do as many kind things as they can in one week. And we're offering training to emphasize, you know, best practices to address bullying. We want our schools to be safe and welcoming places for everyone. If you go to the next slide. And it's an exciting time for families who are starting to think about sending their school, their students to our schools next year. We had our first enrollment fair this weekend with over fifteen hundred families attending at O'Connell, and we'll host more in-person and virtual enrollment workshops. So definitely check it out. We have so many new programs in San Francisco. We're seeing what's available that might be a good fit for your, for your student. Go to the next slide. So I want to wish everyone a happy Filipino Heritage Month. You know, one of the things I think we all love about San Francisco is our diversity here and I want to celebrate our Filipino families and, you know, Tagalog is an official language we recognize as a school district and we have programs that teach about the language and culture. And so please be able to do some recognition this month for Filipino heritage. And I, this slide was prepared, not knowing what would happen today, but on October twentieth, we had a you know, the great shakeout to prepare for earthquakes, and we did it at Everett Middle School and was joined by the mayor and president and Commissioner Matamadi, as well as some of our partners in the district. You know, it says in the earthquake, you should drop cover and hold on. And I think that's what many people have to do today as well. And we I see some quizzical looks, but yes, there was a and, and in our schools, we haven't had any reports of, of issues. So that's good. Then lastly, I'll be speaking tonight on all that I've learned during my first hundred and seventeen days. We just need to share how you know, I love the opportunity to visit schools and I do both hop in and scheduled visits and numerous signs have gone in and get to see student art, which is great, and the kids engaged in visual and performing arts. And then today I was at Feinstein Elementary with, you can see here, other school leaders walking through, having real, you know, thoughtful conversations about the type of instruction we're seeing and what we need to do to meet our goals as a district. And so I want to appreciate the Feinstein staff for welcoming us into the, into their schools. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne. Normally, we would have our student delegates report, but tonight both of our student delegates, Hampson and Kinostra are unable to be here this evening. So we will catch up with them at the next board meeting. And at this time, we'd like to recognize all valuable, valuable employees rave awards. And Dr. Wayne?
Yes. So we have two awards tonight. We have a special service award. So I'll bring up our presenter, Monet Benitez, the principal of SF Public Montessori, to recognize a teacher from there.
There you go. Good evening, everybody. Sorry about that. It is my sincere pleasure and honor as the principal of SF Montessori to announce this month's rave special service award recipient, Joseph Bly. When the pandemic hit, Mr. Joe was partially through his first year of teaching. He showed leadership, strength, caring, and creativity. When the shutdown occurred on March thirteenth, ninth, or two thousand and twenty, he was already strategizing how to pivot to distance learning, get technology in his students' hands, who didn't have it, and help other classrooms to do the same. Mr. Joe is a team player who embodies the spirit of community and collaboration. I was fortunate enough to have Mr. Joe help me acclimate to SF Public Montessori as the new principal this year, along with other staff members as well. It is evident how much he cares about Montessori and the well-being of all the greater community. Mr. Joe, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do for the district and our students and families.
Thank you. I appreciate it, everyone. Yeah, when I finished grad school, I couldn't have possibly imagined that my first year as a classroom teacher was going to be interrupted by a global pandemic. That being said, I was really fortunate to be someone who really loved technology and I, I got to give a shout out to my D Leaf program. It's the digital learning facilitators. And without them, I wouldn't have had nearly as many tools to implement. So I got to say, like, I had the drive and the creativity, and I appreciate all that, but without my community and without the staff behind me and without Principal Keener, who was my principal at the time, and same for me moving forward with my principal right now, Principal Benitez. I just want to say, it's only my fourth year as a teacher. You also, you haven't seen nothing yet. And just get ready to see some more stuff from room three oh six and SFPM.
All right. So we have one more rave award. I'd like to bring up Han Feng, Assistant Superintendent of Middle Schools and our interim head of secondary schools to present an award to one of our middle school principals. But some of you may know I, I was in the district ten years ago as a school supervisor of elementary schools. And so had the good fortune of supervising this principal when he was an elementary principal, which I'm sure when he speaks, he'll say that's the reason why he's getting this award today. But please share our next rave award recipient.
Thank you, and good evening, Dr. Wayne Commissioners. So one of the most important tools in effective schools is consistency. Research and practice have proved that school leaders and teachers must be consistent every day in carrying out their duties if they want to improve student performance and conduct. Principal Tyson Schuman is not only consistent in his focus on student learning and his passion for literacy, but he is also willing to have fun and not take himself too seriously. He was one of the first principals that I knew to dye his hair blue as an incentive for kids to come to school. He gets almost giddy when he invites us to his school because his students in government would like to share their ideas about what they think of district policies. Talk about student agency. He can sit for days talking about academic discourse. I, I think I mentioned literacy. He has a deep passionate for literacy. And then switch to a topic about art or soccer, which is where he is now, coaching soccer. He's also by, by, fun fact, he's also a middle school dad. Going back to the word consistency, he's going into his eighteenth year, one eighth, eighteenth year as an administrator serving San Francisco Unified School District. Did you hear that? Eighteenth year. He continually comes back each and every day to serve the community at APA Gen N E and advocate for his students. Thank you for your service to our SFUSD students, Principal Ty Schuman.
We'll make sure he gets his, his award. Thank you for presenting that.
I, I'm, I'm here. I don't know if you can hear me.
There he is.
And let's see, the video is, is blocked, but wow, Han, I thank you for the kind words. And Matt, I'm definitely attribute this award to you. And everybody else that I've worked with, I had the fortune to work and collaborate with some amazing educators over the twenty years that I've been in SFUSD. And education is, is not a solitary profession. It's, we have to do this work together. And I wouldn't be here every day if we're for amazing teachers, fair professionals, custodians, supervisors, families, and students. That's what keeps, keeps me going. And as Han said, I apologize, I'm at my second passion. Maybe my first passion, soccer, coach my son's team. And close, closely behind that education. Makes me feel really old, too. I think this is more of a longevity award than distinguished service award sometimes, but it is a long game. Students are at the forefront and hope to be able to do it for another ten years. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the honor.
Congratulations again. Thank you to Joseph Bly and to Tyson Schuman for your tremendous service to the school district, to our students. Moving to agenda item E, Advisory Committee Reports and Appointments. We have a report from the Childcare Planning and Advisory Council and Appointments. I'd like to ask Shadé Tabacoli, the coordinator for Childcare Planning and Advisory Council, to present.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Shadé Tabacoli. I am with the Childcare Planning and Advisory Council. Just going to give an overview of CPAC and then of our three candidates before you today. CPAC is a state mandated local body that develops and advises on early care and education policy. We have twenty-five members, thirteen are appointed by the board supervisors, and twelve are appointed by this body. An overview of our process. Those who are interested in joining CPAC submit an application to the CPAC coordinator, that's me. And candidate applications are reviewed and approved to move forward by the CPAC Executive Committee. We have three candidates before you today. Cheryl Orne, Raul Irazo Chavez, and Naima Charles. Two of our candidates, Raul and Cheryl, are currently active members of CPAC. They were appointed by this body three years ago for a, a three-year term that expires this month. So this is great timing. Cheryl is the Child Development Head Start Director at WU Children's Services. She co-chairs the CPAC Workforce Committee, is our treasurer, and is a member of our Title V Contractors Committee. Raul is the Director of Schools and Programs at SFUSD's Early Education Department. I'm sure many of you are familiar with his work. He is the CPAC SFUSD liaison, and he provides regular updates and report outs at CPAC meetings to keep us connected to the work at SFUSD. Our new candidate is Naima Charles. She's the Director of Public Policy Communications at Children's Council. While she's not currently a member, she works closely with CPAC in various capacities. She serves as the co-chair of our Joint Policy Committee and co-leads a lot of our advocacy efforts. She is a candidate for the seat formerly held by Sarah Hicks Killday, who termed out in September. Sarah was appointed by this body as well. Well, thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Colleagues, any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second for approval of the recommendations of the three candidates to the Childcare Planning and Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Now going to public comment. Thank you to the members of the community who shared their concerns about the inappropriate comments that were made at the last regular board meeting on October tenth. The comments were counter to our values of social justice and diversity here at San Francisco Unified School District. It is our belief that as adults, we have to model the behavior that we want to see from our students in the classroom. I want to reiterate that name-calling, personal attacks, profanity, and other offensive language would violate these expectations. The SF Board of Education continues to uphold the highest expectation of civility and decorum at every meeting from the public and amongst ourselves. Respectful engagement is imperative to constructive dialogue. As Board President, I have prioritized and will continue to reinforce these meeting norms at our meetings. Anyone in violation of these meeting norms will be removed and asked to leave from the boardroom. Tonight, I have allocated forty minutes for public comment. I see we have several cards for public comment, and this is for public comment on non-agenda items. I encourage speakers who aren't speaking on the same topic to collaborate and combine their comments so the board can hear all viewpoints during our limited time. Please also note that the board accepts written public comments via email to boardoffice@sfusd.edu. At this time, all speaker cards for public comment must be submitted. Please note that public comment is an opportunity for the board to hear from the community on matters within the board's jurisdiction. We ask that you refrain from using employee and student names. If you have a complaint about a district employee, If you have a complaint about a district employee, you may submit it to the employee supervisor in accordance with district policy. As a reminder, board rules and California law does not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask the staff to follow up with speakers. First, I want to take public comment regarding Empower this evening. We will take in-person public comment first, and then we will go collectively. And then we will also take public comment virtually, and we will have a similar process that we do with naming who is being called up to speak for virtual public comment. At this time, Mr. Steele?
Thank you. So we're taking the Empower comments right now, and I'm calling up five at a time. So when you call your name, please line up behind the podium. Mary Sarasoli, Eugene Pearson, Gloria Machowski. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing you. Chris Klaus and Rafael Picasso. You can go ahead, press the button and go ahead. Press the button first. Press the button on the base. There you go.
Mr. Wayne?
Speaking of the mic.
Oh, that's a good. Mr. Wayne, you owe me $37,516 plus three months' health insurance benefits from last year. I taught at Lincoln High School last year, and I will never set foot in a classroom again after what I experienced with that principal. I am unemployed now, and I've missed out on numerous job opportunities because they required a car, which I could not purchase because I was waiting to get paid from last year. Your academic accolades and prior administrative experiences led me to believe that you could have been our knight in shining armor. But instead, after four months, nothing has improved in the district offices. In fact, it has worsened, and I notice employees are jumping ship since you came along. You should have said paying your employees as a priority and ironed out all of the glitches. It is illegal not to pay us. Immersion is pandemic inundated by rampant homelessness and high inflation. You display no sense of urgency.
Please wrap your thought up. That's time.
Hi, my name is Eugene Pearson, and I work at Burton High School. Over the past couple of years, my taxes have been under withheld for all of 2021. I submitted a new W-4 in 2020. But in 2021, my withholdings referred to my pre- reverted to my previous W-4. I've gotten IRS penalty plus interest. I'm paying $550 a month more each paycheck because my withholdings were incorrect until at least May of 2021. But I can't get a confirmation that the withholdings are now correct. I took an additional class on last school year, but have yet to be properly compensated with my 1.2 FTA, FTE pay, money that was supposed to help me with the 40% paycheck that I got July, August 1. My health insurance got dropped in August. I fixed it after two hours on the phone with the city health system. My health insurance was again dropped in September, saying I moved to my parents' address in Wisconsin. They're my emergency contact. Something, that's the same thing that happened to a colleague. I'm going to finish. It's going to take me about 30 more seconds. The same thing happened to a colleague at the math department at Burton. I called Kaiser, which referred me to the city health system, which referred me to the school district. I submitted a health ticket, which meant no answer, so I went in person to one of the clinics. In total, I spent 10 to 12 hours getting my health insurance reinstated. I was uninsured for three weeks. I had to cancel an X-ray and an appointment with a surgeon per procedure. I've taken two days off to deal with the taxes and healthcare fiasco. It's important to destigmatize mental health, so at the risk of oversharing, I'm bipolar and rely on consistency to remain stable. The pandemic destroyed me. I had hoped 2021 would bring me a return to more familiar, stable rhythm. But the anxiety, sense of helplessness, and frustration wrought by the incompetence of the district has kept me at an uncomfortable edge. I've been a teacher at Burton for 13 years. I hold four credentials and have taught seven different courses over my years. I see my former students thriving in the community. They give me great pride in the work I've done. Yet I've made the choice to leave the profession at the conclusion of this school year.
And sort of make sure everybody knows that it's one minute for public comments, so please do your best to stick to that one minute.
I'm Chris Klaus, a sped teacher at Washington High School. I can't believe that almost 11 months into this Empower payroll system, we are still having to demand that we all get paid on time correctly and professionally. Superintendent Wayne, you didn't create this problem, but it's fallen to you to solve it. A call center number that is open from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. on school days means that most of us will not be able to call until after school ends. This will be especially tricky for later start schools and schools that end at or after 4:00 p.m. I don't know how many times we can say this, but the systems that get put in place to help people need to be accessible to those people. I don't want to miss work or get my question, or to get my questions answered and my pay problems resolved. And quite frankly, I shouldn't have to give up my personal leave time to make sure that I get support for SFUSD's screw-up. Make these supports available to us when and where we can access them. And finally, get this issue resolved before your employees decide to take matters into their own hands or leave altogether.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gloria Masajewski. I'm a former, now SFUSD employee, but I worked for the district for 25 years. And I'm here to explain that although I exhausted my sick leave in 2014 with a bout with cancer, I had accrued 63 days over these past few years. When I went down to the payroll clinic to ask the payroll clerks why my 63 days was reduced down to 175 hours, I was told it was because my sick days were multiplied by 2.80, which is how I was informed to fill out my Empower time sheet. So five days a week, 2.8 hours a day, even though I don't work 2.8, or I didn't work 2.8 hours a day. So basically, my sick, my sick days were stolen from me, these accrued sick days. This is not a glitch in the system. This happened to every single part-time employee in this district. This is now an arbitration, I'm being told, but I can't understand why stealing someone's sick days should be disputed and not just returned because these count towards my retirement. I appreciate some help on that. I would think A&amp;M should be creating a troubleshooting guide for the continuing employees after this contract is over with them. Thank you.
Good evening, other Commissioners and Superintendent Wayne. I'm wearing the mask for a particular reason because I want you guys to remember you stepped up to the plate during the pandemic. It was your, the people, the district called as central workers, your lowest-paid employees of this district, the student nutrition workers, the custodians, the clerks, the warehouse workers, the health workers. These are employees in classified of 1021 stepped up bargaining. And we want respect for our members. And to start with, respect them, equity. What the city is paying their employees that are doing probably less work than what your employees are doing. You have employees here who their asses off for this district. This district running during a pandemic. To keep it running today, keeping it clean and keeping it safe for everybody. So all I'm going to ask for is respect to these employees and give them what they really deserve, a real living wage, equity, so they can stay and live and work in San Francisco and work for the people they love, the students of San Francisco Unified School District. Oh, the teachers too. Get rid of Empower.
Vivette, I didn't call your name. I didn't call your name.
I had a card on.
I know, but I haven't called your name yet. Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, I can't read this. I think it's Yohira. I can't read it. Sabrina Wildman, Sarah Grossman Swenson, Noel Garcia, Darcy Chan Blackburn.
Hey, hi everyone. Good evening. My name is Yohara Quapio. I'm a school social worker in this district, and I'm very proud to be it. I'm here today to talk about the impact that this is, that Empower continues to have on our workers. One of the part of me is to guide and mentor new school social workers that are coming into our district, which we desperately need, by the way. We have about seven schools. We're a full-time school social worker, and our schools are really understaffed. They're really, really feeling it. The consultation calls are coming in, the teachers are burned out, and Empower is impacting us. And my one of the things with people about, instead of talking about groups, instead of talking about counseling, about mentoring, Empower is always an issue that comes up. That should not be taking up our time. Our time should be spent talking about our students. We're talking about school systems, right? We're talking about mental health. But instead, what my colleagues are doing, what they're focusing on is the stress that our time sheets are constant, the costiness, what Empower is costing us. You need to hear this, folks.
You.
Hi, I'm Sabina, and I'm a substitute teacher and a proud member of UESF and also SFUSD alumni. I'm here to say fix Empower now, and this isn't the first time I've come here to say it since I was sleeping upstairs last spring, saying the same thing. My coworkers and I shouldn't have to be worried about our ability to survive, to live, to eat, to get to work. We go to work every day and we do the jobs we love, but we're unsure if we can afford these basic things, and this instability needs to end. The most basic responsibility of an employer is paying its workers. And yet y'all aren't doing that, and there's no excuse for it. SFUSD needs to stop ghosting educators, and we deserve better, and our students and our communities do too. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Wayne. I'm Sarah Grossman Swenson. I'm an SFUSD parent. I'm the co-president of the PTA at Grattan Elementary School. And I want to thank you for your report here tonight about Empower SF. I'm glad to hear that it is being referred to as a crisis. I'm delivering a petition today that was sent by email, signed by over 130 families at Grattan. We want to let all of our SFUSD teachers and staff know that we stand together with them in demanding solutions, competence, and oversight in fixing these problems. Getting Empower issues fixed needs to be the number one priority of the district. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Noel Garza. I'm recently hired as a pair at Everett Middle School, and I'm an SFUSD graduate from Mission High. I want to tell you about how I've not been able to sign up for benefits within, within the first 30 days of being hired. That will be by this Thursday, and I've not been able to sign up for benefits yet. I've spent about eight hours trying to resolve this issue without success, but let's move on. I hear a lot about Empower getting fixed, but I don't hear anything about how teachers are going to get paid what they're owed now. You need to find a way to both pay teachers and fix Empower, since that's what you need to do. They shouldn't have to wait even one more day. Assuming SFUSD performs its due diligence and conducts regular financial forecasting, they should have a payroll account where they can pay these teachers what they're owed. So that really begs the question, why hasn't it been paid out? Why does SFUSD prefer to be in violation of federal labor law versus literally any other alternative? Assuming that that cash is in the account, I really wonder why SFUSD prefers to be guilty of unfair labor practices. This situation is very disturbing to me. Is that my time? That's all.
My name's Darcy Chan Blackburn. I'm a first grade teacher at Sheridan Elementary School, and I'm here to talk about my deep concerns on where this district is going. One of our teachers applied in the second week of August for parental leave at the, for the end of November. She's having a baby, which is great. She made sure to apply early, second week of August, so that she could get the job posted, so a substitute could take the job and she could make sure her kids were covered. Despite this early application, her position was not posted until many, many phone calls and endless conversations by both this month and our principal to get it posted, and it was posted October 14th. So at a time when we have a shortage of substitutes and we need to get people locked in for a long-term position, she was not taken care of because the person who covered leaves was on leave, funnily enough. And there was no one else to cover for her. So this is ridiculous. She's concerned that she won't get covered because her leave has not been approved of still. We can't even hire a substitute to someone come because the leave has not been approved. And she's worried about her students having a teacher. So please take care of business.
Okay, call in the next group. Vivette Brackett, Elliot Portillo, Allison Robnan, Leah McGregor, Jordan, I, I can't read the last name. Jordan?
The last month of Empower issues was totally avoidable. Had this board listened to public comments and questions about the consultant group that you actually hired. I actually came here and shared with you guys information about the consultant and about your plan to supposedly fix the Empower system. And I told you at that time it was insufficient. All of you guys ignored it, and it took an article by Mission Local to actually expose how terrible this company is that you guys hired to fix this issue, and that it would not fix any of the issues, and it would only be paying and wasting $2.8 million to do back tickets while still accumulating thousands of new tickets to keep our teachers unpaid. This board sat there in front of media and consistently have shown that you do not care about these teachers. I can't believe you do, especially when you tout your business, your, your business proclivities and so forth, and say that you guys have thoroughly researched who can fix the Empower issue. It's clear that that wasn't done, and that the two weeks that you spent looking for a consultant was not enough.
Good evening. I'm actually here to speak about something else. My name is Allison. I'm an SFUSD parent, and definitely agree you need to fix Empower. I'm also the daughter of a public school teacher. Schools are a hostile environment for LGBTQ students, a hostile environment. This is the finding of GLSN's National School Climate Survey. In the face of a nationwide attack on our trans kids, this district has turned your back and told our kids that they are not human beings, they are only outcomes. But what kind of outcomes do you expect from kids who are bullied, assaulted, disrespected, too scared to even go to school, and called riffraff by this very board? Your inaction is complicity. Your silence is violence.
Okay, I was still good. Okay, hi, my name is Leah McGeever. I'm here as a fellow trans queer person, ally for trans and queer kids. Solidarity with the teachers, demanding pay to deserve, no school closures, and solidarity with the black students who demanded LOL be desegregated and that racism be dismantled within the school district, and with Muslims who fought for, to get eat on the calendar, only for it to be taken away, and for all students to want to be valued and included. There is a nationwide attack on transgender kids and adults right now. Trans activists are calling it a genocide. Powerful people are taking away insurance coverage for transitioning, not allowing trans kids to be allowed to call their correct pronouns, having CPS taken, taking trans kids away from their families in this nation. Just this year, the state of California passed a transgender refugee bill so that these trans kids and their families can flee from other states to here, to California. So protecting trans kids is very relevant right now. Publicly affirm your commitment to keeping queer and trans kids safe and details to what steps the district is taking. I would really appreciate like 15 more seconds. But then all gender restrooms and lockers at all sites, all schools, and keep them unlocked. You have kids who aren't going to the bathroom at school because they can't. I feel like that's like inhumane. And please funds the Queer Transparent Advisory Council. Nothing has been done with that since February, from what I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jordan Davis. My pronouns are she and they. Pay your teachers, and you should resign, desegregate LOL, and stop closing schools. But I am primarily here to talk about queer and trans students. Specifically, the school district needs to fully operationalize the Queer Transparent Advisory Committee. Make sure that all forms have non-binary options like state and federal. Open all gender neutral restrooms and locker rooms and keep. Make sure that all forms have non-binary options like state and federal, open all gender neutral restrooms and locker rooms and keep them unlocked. And to affirm trans kids and tell us what steps you are taking to keep them safe. Because as a disabled trans woman at the age of thirty-seven, I was never able to be out when I was a child and I am still suffering damage to this world as a result. And we need real solutions for trans and queer students, not bullshit. I yield my time. Fuck you.
I'm a part of common advocates. And today we're talking about school lunches. Seems like I'm a child that goes to school. And since my mother does not have time to make me a lunch, I have to eat lunch at school. But sometimes I don't want to eat that lunch because it's so bad and bland. So I'll make a change in our school lunches. So kids can eat healthier and become stronger. And that was all I'd like to say, especially since they only have two seconds left.
All right, calling the next group, Blanca Catalan. Mero Uribe. Rabbi Dr. Sophia Catherine Rothschild and Sweetie Tagada. Please come line up to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Blanca Catalan and I'm an English learner, so please. I am from Coleman. I'm a promoter and also I'm a mother of a high school from the school district. My son is in high school and most of the mornings I'm outside the schools talking with parents. Right now I am here representing the Latino community and all those parents who are walking right now and cannot be here today. One of the biggest concern is burn in schools. Our children in general are going through a lot of stress. But the one who does the burn and also the one who receive it. That's why we want mental health programs for our children so that they can have a healthy and more appropriate environment for them to learn. The second concern that I heard from the parents is a lot of teachers. So I am here also here. Because the teachers are the ones who are every morning inside the classroom. So you need to give the teacher all that they need. So our childrens can have a quality learning inside the classrooms. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Rabbi Dr. Sophia Catherine Rothschild. The last time I checked, this is a school district. So without teachers and without students, you have no school district. So I think it's imperative that we prioritize the, the, and the teachers and also take care of the, the students. Ensure that they can read and they can write and they can count and they can be productive in society. With that being said, I think it comes down to an issue of priority. We have a city with a twelve billion dollar budget. And I think at some point we have to ask ourselves, how is this money being spent? And what's going on with all this money? Because it's quite clear that the, the, the teachers are not being paid and it's frankly embarrassing. To be a corner city that is supposed to be progressive and forward-thinking and enlightened, yet we won't pay our teachers. It is absolutely shameful.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Sweetie Tanata and I'm with the Salt Association. A Pacific Islander community-based organization here in the city and county of San Francisco that serves the Pacific Islander community. There was an article that was put out from the standard that shared our Pacific Islander students with the chronic absenteeism that has jumped from thirty-four percent in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty to forty percent in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one and sixty-nine percent in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. That absenteeism for Pacific Islanders has doubled just in two years. I want to shed some light that this is a crisis that deserves attention. We know that Ursula Sietana and Heaven Onai are diligently working with leadership teams and school sites. But not that with school sites, but that large percentage should automatically trigger additional staffing to focus on this district, district-wide issue. We're going to talk about resource allocation. Let's please remember the Pacific Islanders when you're at that table and at that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes in-person public comment.
Lisa, we'll go to virtual comment.
Thank you, President Lim. How long do we have for virtual?
Go ahead, Dr. Wayne.
Just, uh, I want to remind folks, so appreciate the, the comments and just, uh, two things just while people are here in person. As a reminder, we do have a table set up to address empower issues and I, I do just want to note that appreciate your coming to the Board of Education and the board has both given me the authority to do what it takes to address this issue and, uh, and, uh, are looking to, uh, hold me and staff responsible for that because we need to make sure operationally this is working. So, uh, but if you need support, please, um, uh, go outside for, for that help. Okay, thank you.
We will hold fifteen minutes for virtual comment. If there are more than fifteen, I will extend public comment for equal time between in-person and virtual.
Thank you, President Lim. At this time, we will hear a virtual public comment on, um, non-agenda items. We'll have, we'll have fifteen minutes and each speaker will have one minute to speak. We will model what we did in person, so I will call five people at a time. Um, raise your hand if you care to speak. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Thank you. So I will call Jennifer, Ms. Marshall, Meredith, Mitch. And caller ending in seven five seven. Again, Jennifer, Ms. Marshall, Meredith, Mitch. And caller ending in seven five seven. Jennifer, go ahead, please.
Hi, you know, I hear a lot from the new superintendent and the school board about their laser focus on student outcomes. But I feel concerned that you have absolutely no interest in the inputs necessary to get those outcomes. Uh, three teachers at my site are not being paid. One of them has not been paid properly since January. I don't know what kind of impact you expect that to have on student outcomes, but it is not pretty. Additionally, we are down three point two F T Es. It is almost impossible to run a three hundred elementary three hundred student elementary school with this low level of staffing. And it is impossible to hire people when they cannot be promised that they will be paid for the work they're doing. Moreover, it was really quite shocking today to read your email Superintendent Wayne and see that you see this as a customer service problem. Unfortunately for the worker staff at my site, we're a late start school. We don't have release time. We will not be calling you between nine and five and we are not your customers. We are the staff of the district. We are the frontline workers doing the work to ensure students and their families get the education they deserve. Please reconsider how you speak to us.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board Commissioners, Superintendent Mac. I am very disheartened that you all have not found a way to pay the teachers. You pay this company all this money. Where you got it from? I have no idea. Simply go out and find the best H R accountant people that you can find, work with the union, bring back the retirees. When does staff want to come down to a board meeting and let the public know they are not being paid? Let them come. Let them give their testimony, then go outside and get it all done. It will be a year in February that I personally started making these comments. There's no reason for it. You should not have hired another consults consultancy firm. All that was, all that was throwing money out the window. Then secondly, no school closures, please, particularly in the African-American community. Particularly, particularly in the Latinx community, particularly in the A P I community. Work with the community to keep all the schools open and pay the people, please. And personally, I blame you three new board members for this mess about not getting staff paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
Thank you. This is Meredith Dodson with S F Parent Coalition. First, please pay our teachers, please. Second, literacy. If a parent enrolls their two children at S F U S D, they could expect that only one will learn to read at grade level. If the family is black, their children each have only a one in five chance of learning to read at grade level. The literacy gap has only been exacerbated for our most marginalized students during the pandemic. This isn't a new challenge at S F U S D and we're not the first organization to be sounding the alarm. But we're doing just that and that's why you received a hand-delivered petition on Friday signed by over two hundred families, two hundred fifty families and supporters. The time is past due, though you now have an audit that's telling you exactly what you need to do to finally give all of our students a chance at learning to read. We've not yet heard that commitment from you. Please urgently commit to adopting evidence-based literacy materials at S F U S D and following the audit's recommendations. Our students can't wait any longer.
Thank you. Mitch?
Hi there. My name is Mitch Bordalot. I'm a certified financial planner with Equitable. And Equitable's been a proud partner of S F U S D's for over forty years, helping with retirement planning and financial literacy for educators. And personally, my team and I have helped with about two thousand S F U S D educators over the last eight years plan for their future and retire with dignity. And I finally came here today because there's been a lasting problem with processing changes for the four oh three B and four fifty-seven deduction request through payroll. And the issue actually started about six months before the whole empower system came on board and it still persists to this day. And I fear issues in this particular area have been overlooked due to all the other payroll issues and they absolutely shouldn't be either. Uh, this has been affecting S F U S D employees' tax returns, retirement security, investment growth, and most importantly, their monthly cash flow. Educators need to be able to reliably submit change requests either directly to payroll or T D S group that are actually processed. Only looking at the people we've helped, at least a hundred of these requests have gone unanswered. When they are answered, it's processed incorrectly. Uh, they're never processed in a timely manner, sometimes taking months. And sometimes when those requests are processed, the district's not actually sending the funds to client accounts in a timely manner. The worst we saw was February this year when S F U S D educator savings were held by the district for about a month and a half before sent to the educators' retirement accounts. I'm over time. Uh, I appreciate the consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Caller ending in seven five seven. I'm sorry, caller. It's, it sounds muffled. We, we can't hear you well.
Okay. Do you hear me better now?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Dorothy Clark and I am a parent as well as a parent educator within the district. With inflation being at an all-time high and lower than, uh, lower market wages for parents. So much so that parents with families can qualify for food stamps. Did you know that? You probably did because you know how low you pay parents. Anyway, it is incumbent on the district to not only make sure that the pay stubs accurately reflect the time workers worked, but also for them to be able to access them. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll call the next five callers. Erica, Todd, Charles. Decoding Dyslexia and Sarah. Eric, Todd, Charles, Decoding Dyslexia and Sarah. I'm sorry, Erica. Erica, go ahead, please.
I'm a parent and an educator. I'm a S F U S D parent and an S F U S D educator. I don't know if parents know and the public knows, there's a black box in our pay stubs when there's any money that's deducted from us or that's, uh, paid to us. Uh, it's called diff prep, pay something. And no educator, I believe no employee of S F U S D knows what that is. Uh, is that even legal? I don't think that's legal. So this started at empower and I believe there is no fixing empower. Just like, uh, the S C I U local ten twenty-one guy said, get rid of empower. The city of San Francisco uses another system. Go look at it. Stop sending money to those companies that only worry about their profits as it's been shown in the news and as it's been shown by the botched, um, cry, empower crisis when it started back in June of two thousand and twenty-one, Ju- July of ten tiles, uh, twenty twenty-one. Empower has more money and we need to stop sending them money. Board of educators, including you, Mr. Kevin Bogus, I voted for you. Stop giving money away. Stop and cancel empower. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
Hi, this is Supriya Ray calling. I am calling on a couple of issues. First, I just wanted to comment about concerns regarding empower, which many people have commented on. It's super troubling that the district has gone close to a year now without paying employees correctly. And also equally concerning is that all the time and effort and attention this is taking away from teachers, the district, everyone involved in this system is time and attention taken away from our kids and their education. So whatever you need to do to fix this problem, whether it's getting an off-the-shelf system or something else, please do so. We need to focus on actual outcomes like the incredibly poor literacy and math scores that the kids are showing, which is just so sad and has been hugely compounded by this pandemic. Second, I wanted to comment on how much I appreciate the board's efforts to work toward good governance and to comment on civility. And in this regard, I want to note how troubled I was to see again an individual that I have heard before come up and swear publicly. This individual did so right in front of a child who spoke next. I don't understand why this behavior is allowed to continue when it's completely against the board's rules. And if we are to model civility and appropriate disagreement, we need to actually have consequences for people who seem to repeatedly violate those rules and to do so intentionally. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Charles?
Um, ten months after the power payroll fiasco, I think it is safe to say that not one person was smart enough with all those six-figure salaries at S F U S D to handle the payroll system management transition. What strikes me as ironic is that not one person lost their job over this. But those responsible get to keep working on it and we as employees are supposed to be assured that they will fix it. But they were the ones who screwed it up in the start, from the insufficient testing to not pulling it back when it failed miserably. Who wants to work for an organization that doesn't pay? Who wants to show up at, with, at the E R to find out their benefits have been dropped? Just even though they got it, the money is deducted from their paycheck. Expecting five-five-five to, to handle payroll is like expecting someone who can't do basic math to do calculus. However bad they do their job, they never, never fired and so you could expect it to never change. This is our nightmare. The same people, the same results, info system, info sys- Info System lost eighty thousand employees. You know, people are resigning over this money. Please fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Decoding.
Hello, this is Megan Potente. I'm a former SFUSD teacher, also currently a co-state director for the Grassroots Group, Decoding Dyslexia California. And I want to echo, you know, the sentiments expressed regarding the Empower situation, which is absolutely devastating, and we just have got to fix that. The primary reason I called today was, was about early literacy. I signed the SF Parent Coalition Literacy Petition because it is just an absolutely critically, critical part of education. Early literacy is, you know, the foundation of all other learning, and it is, it is, deserves the attention. We are so excited that SFUSD underwent the audit of the K-5 ELA curriculum and urged the district to follow the recommendations of the audit. Also, I want to bring your attention, to your attention, a podcast that was just published a few days ago that really exposes how SFUSD's methods are actually counter to science. The podcast is called Sold a Story by APM Reports. And all parents and educators really must listen to this. It is, it is a critical topic, and we're at a critical juncture. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call the final three callers. Sarah, Betty, and H. Kelly. Again, that's Sarah, Betty, and H. Kelly. Sarah, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I am a public school educator. I'm also an SFUSD parent. I know this is going to sound repetitive, but it's been going on for so long that it obviously needs to be said. I just don't see how the district can go forward in any way without fixing the payroll system. I, I think it's criminal at this point. I think in SF Unified, there are so many things that we need to address. I'm hearing comments about literacy. I'm hearing comments from students about school lunch. I'm hearing comments about trying to make school safe for trans kids. And those are issues that we need to be addressing. And until the teachers are paid, I don't see how we can address any of this, and that is a huge problem. With a district this big, with so many people and central staff, I don't understand why this is a problem. Fix this. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty?
Hi, yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Betty Hunter. I'm a parent of SFUSD student as well as alumni of SFUSD. And hearing the comments time and time again of teachers not being paid, understanding that this is definitely repetitive and has been continuous is definitely disheartening for me to know that my son may or may not have a teacher because teachers may walk out and just decide not to teach anymore is definitely something that seems like a very big threat. Not only that, but every school year, it seems to be something else coming up with the school board and what is happening within schools. Last year was the possibility of a state takeover, and the fact that you guys aren't paying teachers right now, there can still be a state takeover. The budget doesn't seem to be working correctly, even though there's been adjustments to it. Students have lost invaluable resources that is needed, especially with their parent educators. And I, I, I just, I just don't know what to say. I know that some people are very new here to the board, and some people are very seasoned. And I really wish that there can be a solution that is found quickly for these teachers so that our students can get the educations that they need, understanding that there has been a tremendous learning gap happening during the pandemic and learning loss. And I just really urge you guys to fix this problem as well as, you know, making sure that the bullying that are happening in schools here in San Francisco is addressed as well because there's a lot of kids who are suffering from that and understanding that mental health has been exacerbated during the pandemic as well. And some of, we've lost our students because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our final two callers are H. Kelly and Jose. H. Kelly, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'd like to talk about data and collecting assessments. I am concerned about sometimes certain groups, marginalized groups in particular, are left out in the data, in particular, students with disabilities. For example, not every school provides data to the state as far as how students with disabilities are doing for reading, math, attendance, et cetera. Sometimes low-income students are not included. Sometimes it's only by race. Sometimes we get Pacific Islanders. I am asking and highlighting this because how can we, as a district, really be informed or assess how we are going to solve problems if we're not consistently providing data in a way that can be broken down so we can really understand the problems? And the second thing is, under Tier Two and Tier Three in particular, there is no feedback. There's no, there's no data. A parent such as myself may or may not know how it's working for our own children except for minor progress goals in individual IPs that may or may not be understood. And so I'm just asking, as we revamp everything, please be mindful how we're collecting data as a district so we can actually have results. And please pay the teachers. It broke my heart. They really did. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and our final caller, Jose.
Hello, good evening, commissioners. My name is Jose Luis de Culmejía. I'm with Coleman Advocates for Children Youth. I'm also a father of two SFUSD students. And the mother of my children is also a UESF member. And many friends and community that are UESF members that are right now struggling to make ends meet. And I know none of you here on the board are content with this issue, but I'm here in solidarity, demanding that there be a larger sense of urgency when it comes to dealing with Empower SF. Here, supporting all our teachers at SF Community School and our advocacy team of our Parent Advisory Council. We have many teachers right now that are still working, haven't been paid. And these folks are our heroes. They're doing God's work every day, stretched thin, understaffed. We have teacher shortages, nurses that we need, front desk folks, and a myriad of other positions. And folks are already overworked, burned out. We're having people quitting left and right because they're, for their own health and their own family. And I just want to stand here with all of our teachers and thank you all publicly and demand that there be some real urgency and action on this issue and get our, all of our teachers paid, all of our folks paid, and make sure that we are able to get to the actual work of dealing with all of the various other crises that are going on in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. President Lam, that concludes virtual public comment.
Thank you. Thank you to the public for coming out this evening and providing public comment. At this time, I'd like to open public comment for non-agenda items to SFUSD students. We will hear from SFUSD students who wish to speak on any matter. Students have up to two minutes to speak otherwise indicated. At this time, I want to see if we have any students for public comment.
Any students in the room who care to speak? Seeing none.
If you're a student and you care to share public comment on non-agenda items or any item, please raise your hand. You will have up to two minutes to speak. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Por favor, levanten su mano aquellos estudiantes que quieran hablar sobre temas que no están en la agenda. Tienen dos minutos cada estudiante. Gracias.
If which student wants to talk about topics that are not on the agenda, please clap your hands.
Seeing no hands raised.
Thank you. Moving to Agenda Item G, Action Items, Vision Values, Goals, and Guardrails. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
Seven, second.
At this time, the board is going to be collectively presenting our presentation for tonight on the Vision Values, Goals, and Guardrails. Next slide, please. I want to begin and open up to share that all seven board members this evening will be presenting on our shared goals, values, or vision, values, goals, and guardrails. It has been an important process that we have endeavored on, upon as the governing board. We also want to be able to show that this has been a unified process with all seven commissioners, even when we have very different perspectives, even when we have tough conversations of how we see different policy solutions for our district. And I just want to express my gratitude and appreciation to each and every of my colleagues for showing up, for putting their best thinking forward and how we're going to move this school district forward for our students. We worked throughout the summer. We worked on a Saturday. And I have to also share, never once did I have my colleagues express complaint of the work that was, that we were putting in because I know how much each one of them cares deeply for our students and for the betterment of our district. So with that, I am going to open up to share the goals around the shared of, share the updated vision, value, goals, and guardrails. We're going to explain the main tensions, decisions the board grappled with, show how the updated vision, values, goals, and guardrails reflects community input, and discuss any proposed changes which have been minor since our last workshop meeting on Saturday. At the end of this discussion, the board will vote to approve the updated values, goals, and guardrails. Next slide. Our approach to improving governance as a school board is premised on two core beliefs. One, school systems exist to improve student outcomes. Second, student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. The commissioners of the San Francisco Board of Education are committed to improving our behaviors and practices to improve student outcomes. Yes, you're going to continue to hear that from me and my colleagues. Next slide. Yes, and those were actually our hands. It was not a stock photo. Effective, effective governance teams demonstrate four behaviors for continuous improvement. One, clarify priorities. Monitor progress. Third, to align resources. And fourth, communicate our results. These are the four essential behaviors for effective governance, and this is what you can expect from the Board of Education. Want to give a context of how we began this work. In May, next slide, please. In May, the board began training to improve its effectiveness. We worked with the Council of Great City Schools, and we continue to work with the Council of Great City Schools. The board attended a conference to learn about student outcomes-focused governance. We revised its rules and operating procedures to increase transparency and efficiency. And I want to thank again the AdHoc Committee led by Commissioner Matomedy as well as members Commissioner Sanchez and Vice President Bogus. We drafted vision and values, goals, and guardrails for the district. Next slide. This outlines the work of the board. That effective boards define that vision, values, goals, and guardrails. The vision. The vision is a community, and we are representatives of the community of those values. Long-term, which are ten-plus-year expectations of what San Francisco Unified School District students will know and be able to do. The values. The community's global non-negotiables that must be honored while in pursuit of the vision. The goals. The community midterm five-year expectations for what SFUSD's students will know and be able to do. And fourth, the guardrails, which has, I recognize the concept at times even for us as board members to really grapple with what that means and what does that look like? The guardrails is a community-specific non-negotiables that must be honored while we're implementing the goals. Next slide. The superintendent defines those interim goals and interim guardrails. And what are those leading indicators of that progress towards those goals? So created by the board are those vision, goals, values, and guardrails, and is on the superintendent around how are we going to measure that progress towards a goal? They're going to be measured multiple times per year. We're going to have predictive of those goals and the factors that the superintendent can influence. The interim goals demonstrates adherence to those guardrails. And those will also be measured multiple times per year. And factors that, that superintendent can also influence. I'd like to turn it over now to Vice President Bogus.
Thank you, President Lam. I'm going to talk a little bit about the board's process to create the vision, values, goals, and guardrails. We started the work back in July. July 17th, we drafted the board's draft vision, goals, and guardrails on student performance. Starting in September, we hosted twenty listening events as well as conducting a survey. Earlier this month, October 15th, we revised the board draft vision, values, goals, and guardrails based on the community input that we heard. Today, we plan to adopt and approve the final version of the vision, values, goals, and guardrails. And then we'll work to implement the goals as the superintendent does his work in the interim. And I want to just lift up a big part of this process was the public being engaged and providing us with lots of input. I really want to lift up the work that was done both during this process and before this process by all of our advisory committees. And as we get later, we'll see a little bit of how that input was taken into the process. If we go to the next slide. Some of the things I'll highlight from our community listening campaign, really just around the, the numbers that we did. We had nine hundred and eighty-eight attendance respondents, and we collected almost four thousand pieces of input from our collective school community. If we can go to the, the next slide. And this one here is really lifting up the, the reports from our community partners and advisory committees as well as some of the work that the board has done previously. And all this is available for folks. There is a link through Board Docs, and it's also available, I believe, through our website, at SFUSD. And if we could go to the next slide. On this slide, it shows the, the community listening analysis. The Council of Great City Schools conducted an independent analysis of the community feedback. They're all publicly available, so you'll have opportunity to see the information that we took in and helped us guide our decision as well as a chance to see kind of what everyone collectively was saying during this time. And if we can go to the next slide. Just again, a big thank you. It wouldn't have been possible without the board staff. Really a lot of appreciation to you, to central office staff, all the volunteers, the advisory councils and committee members, all the different sites that hosted listening sessions that are listed here, and all the people who took. And all the people who took the time to fill out the survey or gave us any input at all through the process. Uh, it really helped make us have a stronger process and we hope that you see your inputs and values reflected um in the work that we've produced and pulled together.
Thank you, Vice President Bogus. Now, before the big reveal, I am pleased to give you a summary of what we changed since the draft versions of our vision, value, goals and guardrails in July. Next slide, please. The first change we made was to increase focus and reduce our goals from four to three. I am personally very pleased with this change as my colleagues have heard the number three from me since the very beginning. We really must focus if we hope to accomplish our goals. And the three goals we settled on are challenging enough to earn our full attention for the next five years. The second change was to clarify some ambiguous and abstract terms and ideas. So that regular people can understand them without too much explanation. I call it normal people speak rather than education industry speak or edu speak. The third change we made was to push ourselves more, to be more ambitious and aggressive. We heard this time and time again from our community meetings. And the board agrees with the community that we have to be more ambitious. In setting numerical targets, we really wanted to set our targets at one hundred percent. Because we don't want to leave any of our students behind. However, we are aware of historical trends and the significant challenges we face to move even any percentage higher from the current status. So we made our goals more ambitious from our draft, but still we believe realistic and achievable. We now challenge our superintendent and his team to fundamentally change the way we do business at SFUSD. Such that we can achieve the ambitious goals that we as a board representing our community has set. Next slide, please. This slide notes some of our discussion points during the workshop. I won't read it. We had six hours worth of frank and healthy brainstorming, debate and negotiation. It is what functioning boards do, and I'm so pleased to be part of this board to do this work. And you are all welcome to view view the six-hour-long video at two X speed, I recommend. Now I will hand it over to my colleague, Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Commissioner Chu. Um, I will be going over the updated vision and values that we landed on. You can see up here, but I'll read it for you. Um, all SFUSD students will graduate as independent thinkers with a sense of agency. Who have attained academic and creative skills to lead productive lives and contribute to our community. We wordsmithed that over a number of hours. Um, and then our updated values, these are. Roughly um updated from previous ones. Student-centered, we put students' needs first with a focus on the whole child. Fearless, we persist through challenges with humility, transparency and a growth mindset. United, we celebrate and build on each other's strengths and differences to collectively achieve excellence as a district. Social justice, we stand with those who are most impacted by systems of oppression and actively change those systems within our district. Diversity-driven, we respect and seek to understand each person to be an inclusive and anti-racist district. We did a lot of wordsmithing around those as well. Um, next is Commissioner Motomedy.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Um, so. I'm going to be going over the the goals that we set and as Commissioner Chu mentioned, we. Committed at the start to not have more than five goals, so we could really, really focus. Each goals goal with is last is um. Will last for five years with interim goals along the way. And the goals describe what students know and are able to do. So we tried to pick goals that are understandable, measurable and where we already have data. So the goals need to be smart. They, these goals that we've set forward are different than previous goals in some ways is in that they're transparent, simple, measurable. And therefore, we're expecting to be held accountable to them. We are not deviating from the district's previous um goals in the past or previous commitments. This is really the biggest changes around transparency and accountability and focusing on operationalizing. The ensuring that we meet the goals. And we heard loud and clear from the community that the community really wanted this transparency. And not just to talk about what we're going to do five years from now, but what we'd be doing along the way and how we'd be communicating that. And we also heard loud and clear that we need to be in community regularly and off often. Two-way communication is needed and there's a lot of desire to connect and inform around our goals and all of our activities as a district. So next slide. Setting transparent and measurable goals is extremely important and necessary, but it's not sufficient. We set stretch goals. So the three sections that we focused on are third grade literacy, eighth grade math and college and career readiness. And this doesn't just mean we'll be looking at what is happening in third grade or what is look happening in eighth grade or at the end of um. Our students' career here at SFUSD, but what is happening, happening along the way for them to be successful. And to be supported and challenged um to to meet their the goals that we've set forward. And this will require changes in our behavior, changes in alignment of resources. We haven't yet determined what that exactly means, but we're committing as a board. And as a superintendent collectively to ensure that we do meet these stretch goals. Third grade literacy, we're looking at a um moving from a fifty-two proficiency proficiency rate to a seventy percent proficiency. By the end of five years. Likewise, we've jumped, we're also um looking at eighth grade math and moving from a forty-two proficiency to sixty-five proficiency. And I want to note that we we are looking at the S back as um. As a key indicator, but it's not at all the only indicator and that we'll be talking about that. Others will be talking about that later in this presentation. The superintendent will create interim goals that can be measured throughout the year. And of course, at the classroom level, there will be numerous other assessments that teachers will use. And supports that will be offered to provide much more nuanced information about how well we're teaching students and supporting our students. But every district does use S back and we can compare with other districts. And that um gives us a helpful sense of benchmark. So these goals, along with the vision, values, guardrails, give focus to the district, but it's not a top-down mandate to work. There has to be reorientation in the district around assessment and progress. And lastly, our third goal is around career or and or college readiness and focusing and making sure that. Our twelfth graders who leave our district have agency. And are on their way to be um engaged in college or career readiness. And that will increase from fifty-seven percent to seventy percent over the next five years. And I'm going to be fully transparent that I forgot to make a note of who would be speaking after me. So Commissioner Alexander, um, passing it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Motomedy. Um, so I'm going to talk about the goal that we got rid of. Um, and it's on the next slide. Um, so if you've been following this process closely, which I'm sure all of you have. We back in our initial draft had four goals and the last goal um was this one that's on the screen. That has to do with our graduate profile in SFUSD. We decided at our workshop on October fifteenth to get rid of this goal. I'm going to tell you why I was the biggest advocate for this goal and also then why I'm uh why I support the decision to get rid of it. Next slide, please. So the reason. Uh, yeah, next, next one, yeah, that one. So the reason I really appreciate this goal, and I think a lot of members of the community did, was because we have in SFUSD something called the graduate profile, which not everybody knows about, but it includes these um this description of what kids should really know and be able to do by the time they they leave us. In six areas, content knowledge, career and life skills, global, local and digital identity, leadership, empathy and collaboration, creativity. A sense of purpose and sense of self. And this um really reflects, I think, a broad. And whole child approach to education that I think a lot of folks value within SFUSD. And this has been on the books for a while. I think we've been a little inconsistent as a district over the years and how we've implemented it. But it's been there and I think there's a number of us that that appreciate it and that's why it was included as initially as a draft goal. Uh, next slide, please. In the feedback from the community, we heard a lot of support for the graduate profile, in particular from folks who. Felt like we needed a more robust set of measures, right, that we didn't want to just look at the S back, reading and math. As as the only measure, and we have included college and career, but this would be much more nuanced. However, we also recognize, and my colleagues made this argument quite uh effectively during their October fifteenth meeting. That we actually don't have an assessment. We would need to develop performance assessments which would take time and be complex. In that uh because there was no way of measuring it yet and because there's so many other priorities we have right now as a district, such as making sure that our educators get paid. That perhaps this was not the time to take on a whole new effort around developing assessments for this goal, as worthy as that might be. So um, next slide, please. We had a really good debate. As several of my colleagues have mentioned, there there was, there was disagreement, there was discussion, we advocated. Um, I made a case for including the graduate profile, but as I listened to my colleagues make their points, um, and there's some summary of the arguments here. I became convinced that the best decision was in fact to um leave this aside. Um, and so we, and we all agreed that we wanted to go with the three goals. Uh, one thing that we did do was we edited it to address this issue around sort of the whole child education. And now, and again, that was feedback we heard from a lot of places, was we edited one of our guardrails, um, the one on serving the whole child. And my colleague, Commissioner Weissman Ward, will talk about the guardrails in a moment, but we tried to to sort of edit that one to encompass many of the elements that were included in the graduate profile. So with that, I will turn it over to you to talk about those guardrails.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. And I just, I'm, before I jump into this slide, I I want to just echo um President Lam's. Introduction that this, I think, might be the first time we've ever, the board has ever had a group presentation. I just want to pause on that because I think it's really reflective of the consensus building and collaborative work that we've done. As a team around this really, really, really important work, of course. With our superintendent at the helm and with thanks to Council for Great City Schools. So I I'm excited to be a part of this. Um, and I'm excited to to share the guardrails. So um, what are guardrails? It's a big question we got at a frequent question we got at just about maybe every um listening and engagement session that we had. So school boards identify guardrails to ensure. That the community values are protected while in pursuit of the district's goals. So they're there to protect our values. And they're written in a way that allow the board to protect these values while maximizing freedom of our educators, of our system to uh serve. You the unique stu, the unique needs of students. Um, and the guardrails are um are limits on on the superintendent. So if you can move to the next slide. I just want to flag that there are some brief, some uh minor uh red lines and that's just to for for clarity's sake. The five guardrails are listed here and before I go over them, I I want to encourage folks, if you have time. To go back and actually look at the track change document that shows just how drastic. Of a changes we made from our first session that we ever had back in May to October. And they absolutely reflect the really, really valuable and thoughtful and amazing feedback we got in community. They reflect a lot of the extensive work that our PACs have been doing. Our advisory committees have been doing for for months, for years, for decades. And so um we were able to benefit from all of those insights and from all of the feedback. So the first one is effective decision-making. The superintendent will not make major decisions without utilizing a process and it describes the type of process that we expect to happen. Serving the whole child and I I want to flag, this is what um Commissioner Alexander was referring to. And we said, if we're not going to include graduate profile as a specific um goal. How do we make sure that we are capturing our commitment to serving the whole child and recognizing that? If our children don't feel safe and well and it have the ability to focus in school for whatever reason. We're not, we're not going to be able to to provide access to education. And so this one is really acknowledging that. And so the superintendent will not take approaches that neglect the cognitive and academic development, social and emotional development, identity development. Physical and mental well-being or ethical and moral development of our students. So anytime our superintendent is looking to. Work to achieve our goals, this is a a guard against that, a a guard to make sure that he's not uh or that the board, we're not. Taking approaches that that could harm our students in those ways. Curriculum and instruction. Um, the superintendent will not allow curriculum and instruction. That is not rooted in excellence, not challenging and engaging, not student-centered, not culturally responsive or differentiated to meet the academic and need academic needs of all students. Resource allocation. The superintendent will not allow resources to be allocated without transparently communicating how the allocations are baseline sufficient to operate all schools. While addressing inequitable inputs and creating more equity and excellence in student outcomes. My colleague, Commissioner Motomedy, talked about the importance of transparency and so we see it reflected here again. And then lastly, strategic partnerships. So the superintendent will not impede collaboration with the city of San Francisco, state and federal agencies. Community-based organizations, philanthropic organizations and business community to advance the district goals and values. So we look to afford to having more collaboration moving forward. And I'll turn it over to President Lam.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to pause before I open up for the round robin reflections. I'm going to open up at this time for public comment.
I'll call your name and please come line up at the podium. Thor Boucher. Vivette Brackett. Alita Fisher. And Karen Fleishman.
Good evening. My name is Thor Boucher and I'm the principal of Monroe Elementary and a delegate representative for UASF. UASF is grateful for the opportunity to help develop the board's vision, values, goals and guardrails. However, many of our members only learned about the opportunity when we received an email from President Lam on October nineteenth. Of the UASF members asked if they participated in the survey originally sent by Commissioner Alexander on October fourth. Seventy-eight point seven percent of the members did not recall receiving the survey. But when asked of the same group who would participate if the survey was offered again. One hundred percent of members indicated that they would like to provide input. To help uplift, strengthen and implement the strategic framework drafted by the Board of Education. We recognize and value that the board held over twenty listening sessions. With about four thousand data points from nine hundred and eighty-eight individuals. But that was out of sixty thousand stakeholders. Who were these individuals? What stakeholder groups do they represent? And what voices do we still need to hear from?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board of Education's primary role is to represent the community's vision, values for public and education. The BOE proposed value visions, goals and guardrails update is based on input of only nine hundred and eighty-eight individuals. Many of who do not even have children in the district in attendance in any of our schools. That represents less than two percent of San Francisco's district's population. And they should not be making the decisions for ninety-eight percent of our district. Our community and outreach efforts have failed miserably. Originally, you guys had it slated to only do four outreach meetings and then you at the last minute. I'm added about seven to eight more. Thus not even scheduling some of these on back-to-school nights when parents could not participate. As well as not even offering a remote option. During the pandemic, twenty-five hundred parents attended a virtual meeting. That's almost triple the number of people that responded or participated in your session. You guys need to go back to the drawing board and stop this madness of preconceived notions of how you guys already want to move forward with this district. It's disgusting.
I'm Karen Fleishman and I support a move toward an outcomes model. But I'm very concerned that without addressing targeted universalism and having goals for specific groups of students. When we have a huge opportunity gap among our students. It's going to have the effect of pushing out. The schools will be incentivized to push out. Black, brown, uh, Pacific Islander native students. So for example, you want to move um to seventy percent of our graduates being college and career ready. Great, but currently only twenty-five percent of black students are college and career ready and thirty-three percent. and thirty-three percent of Latinx students are college and career-ready. So the high schools will be incentivized to push them out so that they don't interfere with attaining seventy percent. If you want to move toward these goals, you have to have goals that will target specific groups or it will impact them in a very bad way.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent and Commissioners. My name is Alita Fisher. Thank you so much for this work. I have to say, your intentionality around outcomes is impressive. The number of meetings that you've held on weekends, huge dedication. You're almost caught up with us, Parent Advisory Committee, so go out and do our outreach on the weekend. So, but anyway, I would, I would challenge you to go back and review the goals and guardrails. I'd say approving this information tonight is premature. The advisory committees have asked for another session. We were told there wasn't time. But especially, you all know my passion is reading. So when we talk about the reading goal, S back cannot be the measure we look to in our goal. Strong readers learn the elements of reading phonology, sound symbol association, syllables, morphology, syntax, semantics, even referring to S back is like using the ACT to determine whether or not our kids are learning the concepts of geometry. It's just apples or oranges. It's not a comparison. So my question is, have the real experts in this work, our administrators, who were just here, our teachers, our community experts, like our partners at UCSF Dyslexia, have we engaged with the broader community in the details of this report, which is so important to the overall success? Thank you.
I have one more. So we do.
Thank you. Want to talk about the goals. The three categories that you guys had up, third grade literacy, fifty-two percent proficiency rate, eighth grade math, forty-two percent proficiency rate, college career readiness, fifty-seven and a half percent. That's good on a macro level. How about on a micro level? What is that reflective of the Pacific Islanders? What is that reflective of? What is the percentage on that? I can probably guarantee you, with the sixty-nine percent after two years rate that I expressed earlier, it's probably higher, right? And then we talk about, and then you talk about the guardrails, effective decision-making. Will the Pacific Islanders be thought about? Serving the whole child, will the Pacific Islanders be in that discussion? Curriculum instruction, resource allocation, strategic partnership. We're dealing with the crisis. You want to talk about this pandemic that we're just getting out of? We're living in a pandemic. As a Pacific Islander group of people that has many disparities in this community in the city and county of San Francisco, we ask you to please keep us in mind when you're talking about us. We need all the resources, the staffing, people that look like us, that can deal with our children. When you're talking about cultural competency, identity development, please keep those things in mind.
Thank you.
Pacific Islander community and the students. Thank you.
That concludes the in-person public, the in-person portion of public comment. President Lamb.
We'll now go to virtual public comment.
Okay. Again, as a reminder, I'll call five at a time. Please raise your hand if you care to give a public comment on the vision, values, goals, and guardrails. Each speaker will have one minute. We'll have up to fifteen minutes. Please raise your hand if you care to speak. Can we have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches. En este momento voy a llamar a cinco personas para que hagan el comentario público relacionado con la visión, los valores, las metas, y los límites del distrito. En este momento vamos a ofrecer un minuto por persona, un total de quince minutos. Por favor, levanten la mano si quieren hablar. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. So Todd, Ms. Marshall, H. Kelly, Betty, and Charles. Again, that's Todd, Ms. Marshall, H. Kelly, Betty, and Charles.
Hi there. This is Supria Ray calling in again. Thank you. First thing I wanted to say is just how much I appreciate the board's efforts here. This is the most outreach that I've ever seen done in the last two and a half or so years that I have been following board activity. And I really appreciate seeing the board working together to try to undertake this difficult work. I do have some concerns about this. I certainly don't want to derail the process and don't expect that this will do so. But my main concern is around the guardrails, that the guardrails are essentially too general. It seems like they should be narrow so you don't have people consistently arguing about whether or not a given guardrail was violated. In this regard, I think that the guardrail around serving the whole child and the one around resource allocation have a lot of language that people would be likely to disagree about. So that's just something I wanted to bring into your attention. And also, I wanted to note that while the SFUSD acronym around values is very clever, and I can see why that's appealing, I do have concern that there seems to be nothing there about responsibility. And that's something that it seems like the district has not focused on enough with regard to, you know, students, everything from students to the adults in the system. Everyone needs to be responsible for their actions and behavior. Everyone needs to be responsible for helping kids to get a good education. And kids also need to be responsible for working to obtain and take advantage of what they're being offered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so, I have, thank you so much. It sounds kind of good. I kept wondering, as you were sharing, what happened to Vision 2025? I looked at the calendar, and the calendar still says twenty twenty-two. There was so much effort put into Vision 2025. It was exciting. We're looking forward to it. We have a new partial board, a new superintendent, but what happened to Vision 2025? Your guardrails doesn't make me feel comfortable at all as an educator, as a mother, as a grandmother with my grandchild's education. Doesn't make me feel comfortable at all. It sounds like a dog and pony show. Put it on hold, please. The seven of you, plus the superintendent and the staff, sit down in a foyer, upstairs someplace in a room, get everybody paid. You do it yourself. Why should you do that? Then come back with this, what you just presented to us tonight. The first priority should be getting everyone paid. We really can't hear and understand anything else. Then why should you do that? Then we have to catch up the children who have been in a global pandemic in mathematics and reading and everything else they need to graduate. Thank you.
Thank you.
H. Kelly.
Hi, my name is Hava. I'd like to talk about the literacy goal. It's personal for me. I'd like to say, number one, I'm very, very, it's a noble goal to have all students or seventy percent be proficient by third grade. However, I have concerns about the interim or subgoals that were not included in the presentation tonight. However, we're discussing at a different time. First, I am concerned, how are you going to measure these goals for K through two? Someone mentioned S back. That actually doesn't even start until third grade. What specific changes, system-wide, will you be making to achieve these goals? Second, and more importantly to me, why are the sub or interim goals not inclusive of all community groups that are currently struggling to read and write? By the way, because that is literacy. Again, this includes students with disabilities, low-income families, Pacific Islanders, Latinx, Black students, English-language learners. I don't know if I missed anyone. The goals are not consistent across grades. I don't know how you're going to measure them, and they're not inclusive of all community groups. So for that alone, I'm very, very concerned, but I am incredibly grateful that this is on the map. So.
Thank you. Betty.
Hi, thank you again. Just wanted to say that I am happy to see that the board has been very thoughtful and have worked with community. Some concerns for me is really around how equitable is this? And so, understanding that, when I think about equity, I think about if one of my kids wants water, I give them water, right? If another one of my kids is hungry, I make sure to feed them. If one of my kids is very, very, very thirsty, I give them more water. And so how does that make sense when it comes to the goals, right? In looking at the literacy and the math and understanding that this isn't an equitable approach, as many have said on this call today, that, you know, some of our kids are at different levels when it comes to math proficiency, as well as reading proficiency or literacy proficiency. And then also just really wanting to uplift that graduation readiness is something that is near and dear to my heart, understanding that I've had a lot of friends and other students come to me, talking to me about how they don't feel prepared to graduate here from SFUSD. And when they do go on to college, that they tend to drop out for one reason or another. But understanding that, you know, there needs to be more done, there needs to be more community input on this. And I just want to thank you guys for the work that you guys have done. And then I think we need to continue to do that work a little bit more.
Thank you. And Charles.
Thank you. I want to thank the board and the soup for their work around these goals and guardrails. But I question the inclusive anti-racist self-reflection. Because you have de facto segregation in SF. After the release of the test scores, there's an obvious reason, no one wants to mention, why there is a thirty percent opt-out rate in public schools. Who would want to send their kid to the worst-performing school on purpose to make a point? I want my kid in their peers to be at grade level. So first, stop insulting the citizens of San Francisco and create schools all would want to send their school, their kids to. There are so few white kids in SFUSD at certain schools, especially middle and high school. The only white people the students know are their teachers. Maybe SFUSD endorses racial segregation in society, but I don't. SFUSD did abandon a federal consent decree around desegregation. And I don't think that a segregated SFUSD prepares students for the reality of their adult world and arms them with a social intelligence to succeed when it's segregated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call in the next five. Meredith, caller ending in seven five seven, Tom Anderson, Vanessa, and Brittany. Again, Meredith, seven five seven, Tom, Vanessa, and Brittany. Meredith, go ahead, please.
Thank you. This is Meredith Dodson with SF Parent Coalition. Again, I'm going to be really brief. I just wanted to appreciate the board for your work on this plan. I'm not going to get into any details. I think others have already done that, and you've been doing that enough over the last few months. So thank you for all of the work that you've done on this. I just really appreciated, I know a lot of our parents in our network and teachers received a lot of the outreach notifications. I know we saw them multiple times every week when you were conducting the outreach sessions and that parents and the community had opportunities to go to different schools close to where they lived or close to where they worked. So really appreciate all the outreach. And then finally, it's just so refreshing to hear this school board talk about student outcomes so much and have it continually guide your work as a board together. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Caller ending in seven five seven.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Clark from Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco. Now would like to speak on college and career readiness. As written, the interim goals do not specify interim goals for student groups, and this is the opportunity to address achievement gaps. So for suggestions for the revision is to make the On Track to Graduation measure a grade nine to eleven measure, use similar structure that is outlined above for third grade literacy for each grade and measure to establish overall and overall and student group interim goals for each grade based on focal student groups. They are disproportionately and historically underperforming. For instance, for grade nine to twelve, college credit course or CTE pathway, consider maybe changing the successful placement at the fourth, certain grade level. And also, I would like to comment on the slide. On slide thirteen, you said that Bret Hart is a middle school, when in fact Bret Hart is an elementary school. And the survey that was sent out was sent out on a Wednesday and was due back on that Friday. And to me, that seems like it's not really trying to get parent engagement. It just seems like it's giving the appearance of parent engagement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vanessa.
Hi, good evening. This is Vanessa Mararam, the Executive Director for Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. I want to thank all of my colleagues and advocates that have weighed in on the goals. And my conversation today with you all is a recommendation for the revision of the goals related to effective decision-making. I went ahead and sent a couple of emails related to this, but overall, wanted to share that our organization actually offers solutions related to family engagement indicator and effectiveness. We actually have an assessment that we can work with you on to make sure that we are actually driving for effective decision-making. And this work is based on Harvard professor, Dr. Karen Mapp's work related to capacity-building frameworks and family partnerships. So if you're interested in this, please let me know. Happy to support you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany.
Hi, my name is Brittany Zedehaus, and I am with Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco. I would like to comment on the first goal, third grade literacy. There isn't continuity and focus on specific student groups that are underperforming and underserved. Furthermore, I think there's four points to, four subheadings to this goal. One, identify the current baseline for the first grade by looking at the kindergarten end-of-year assessment data for those students who have continued into first grade. Do this for each year that previous, that previous data is available. Show these data overall and by specific targeted student groups. Two, if multiple years of data exists, look at the trends. Three, set a specific end-of-year target for all students and separate targets for each group of concern that you'll focus on keeping in mind that those student groups that are lacking far behind or disproportionately underachieving will need more aggressive targets accompanied by more interventions and support. And four, attend students moving into proficient, as well as ensuring that students maintain proficiency year over year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom.
Tom. Yeah, can you hear me? Yes. Oh, I'm a parent and special education teacher in the district. I think the board is trying to, you know, get the pat on the back by giving it off and handing it off and saying, now it's the superintendent's job. While I think it's good to have student outcomes, of course, as a parent and a teacher, I think what we have to also realize as special education teacher, our resources this year and many years are gutted. This year, we had a lot of TSA's, counter specialists and all that who are reassigned. So that support is not there. So how am I supposed to support my students when I don't get the support? If, what directives is the superintendent going to give? Is the board just going to say, okay, hands off, it's all on you? But when his office is gutted, or when they can't even pay people on time, it's very hard to trust that that's resource, those resources are going to go to help those goals. So I think it's fine to like create a goal, but if you're just going to say, create a goal, and then we're done with it, that's kind of haphazard, and it doesn't really make sense. So I think a lot of the public comment, I just urge you to like actually discuss it. I know you can't necessarily discuss what we say and like respond to it, but like, otherwise, it just feels like... I know you can't necessarily discuss what we say and like respond to it, but like, otherwise, it just feels like what's the point of us giving public comment? Not just here, but in other ways and surveys, if you're just going to ignore it and do what you're going to do anyway and vote how you're going to vote anyway. So, I ask you to stand up, go to the schools. I've asked you, I haven't seen an interview at Dolores Worth Elementary where I work. I don't know if you care about that school or want to be at that school or give it, you know, dang about that school or what. But please, we have a lot of great students, staff and parents there.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the next group. Rianda, Brandy, Laura, Rianda, Brandy, Laura, Tony and Rena. Rianda, Brandy, Laura, Tony and Rena.
Good evening, Board. Thank you. Good evening, Board Commissioners. My name is Rianda Batiste and I am an APAC Parent Leader. And tonight, we wanted to discuss the interim goal guardrails. Families do not just want to be consulted. That is the least you can do on the engagement spectrum. Where are the opportunities for true collaboration and partnership? An educational partner is not just a consultant. Your process as written is a clear indicator that decisions has already been made. And right now, you're conducting a temperature check to see how said decision is going to be responded to. Please provide more transparency in how consulting will take place and how families will be true partners. Remember, these are our children. Nothing for us without us.
Thank you. Brandy?
Hi, my name is Brandy. I am a parent and a former educator as well. I just want to reiterate a lot of the things that Ms. Marshall alluded to. I know I was chair of our school's school site council. We're really excited about Vision 2025. It looked at the whole child. This just feels like George W. Bush's No Child Left Behind in a lot of ways. It's a very small, but very specific group of outcomes based mostly on Sback test scores. It feels very retrograde and I am, what we've seen in other cities is that those test scores are sometimes used as a part of a narrative to close our public schools. And just a little civic center lesson to a lot of folks here, I'm a former teacher. There was a lot of real estate money that went in toward recalling through three of our school board members. And a lot of us are very concerned that this real estate is just seen by a lot of people as a way, a lot of people are just wanting to close our schools and use the real estate for other things. And so, I just encourage you to have a little more compassion for a lot of the communities that are speaking out against this plan, which doesn't really have any specifics and just is, quite frankly, much worse than Vision 2025, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Hi, everyone. My name is Laura Padilla. I am a parent at SFUSD. I'd just like to say thank you for the effort. Thank you for the attempt to listen. And I hope you continue to listen. Obviously, the work is not done because I've heard so many solutions being offered tonight. I heard so many more ideas that could be further discussed. I think it's a great start. I think the work isn't done. And I also don't think the work can continue without paying our teachers. You're missing a big player on your team. Pay your teachers' place. No strategy can move forward without our educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony?
Good evening. I am Tony Hines, an APAC Parent Leader, and I also believe the work isn't done. I believe the interim goals, goals one and two are heavy on student behavior to change outcomes. Where is the adult accountability? Where is the district accountability? Where is the equity? We send our babies to school with funds of knowledge and ready to learn. Our babies should not hold the burden of passing bias and subjective tests that are not true indicators of their learning. Please provide families and community with what accountability measures district staff will be held to. How is staff going to receive proper professional development? What accountability and progress monitoring tools can families use for accountability? Also, pay them. How are you ensuring that curriculum is closely responsive if you have not implemented the Black Studies Resolution? Where is the work with Ethnic Studies Resolution? Please firm up some of these goals and don't throw away what was already working just because you want to say something real cute like vision, values, goals and guardrails. It's cute, but let's get some work done. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final caller is Rena. Rena, go ahead, please. Rena?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Yes. My name, my name is Rena and I'm a parent of the SFUSD for at least 20 years now. And so unfortunately to say that I can see that SFUSD got from bad to worse. My biggest concern here right now, and I've just heard that one of the parents and consequently, the special ed teacher raised his concern. And I just want to add on to that, that we have almost no support for our special ed in the entire school district. Very limited special ed in elementary school, little bit better in middle school, but not enough. We have 34 kids plus in the class. You're talking about educating kids. This is our future. We're building that future today. We need to put every possible effort to make our kids learn. A lot of kids, even though they have special needs, they're able and capable to learn, but in much smaller environments. If we're not going to do it now, today, here, we will very, very much regret so in few years from now. And like I said, I see it going from bad to worse within the last 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude our virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. And thank you to the public for your public comment. I'm now going to open up to my colleagues for round robin of reflections. You'll have up to two minutes. You can share, if you like, within either a lesson about the process, one important thing about the BBGG product or one hope moving forward. So, at this time, I will go to my left and go start with Commissioner Weisman Ward. Two minutes. And Vice President Bokus is going to time.
Of course he is. So, I know that we can't engage directly with, with public comment, but just want to say I appreciate it. And I think a lot of the, a lot of the discussion that is being had in the public is discussion that we also had. And in coming to narrowing down to the three, we had to think about how we wanted to prioritize what the realities are, are limited resources and how we wanted to focus. You know, we really were very, very enthusiastically committed to literacy, knowing that it is an absolute foundation to engagement period. And if we don't have our kids reading, they're not going to be doing much else. And so, whether it, we're providing additional interventions and supports early on, whether it's we're engaging and looking at our literacy curriculum to make sure we're using the right curriculum. All of these things are part of the work that's to be done. So, this is just the beginning in terms of how we are setting these goals in order to hold ourselves accountable, not just to the five-year goals, but these interim goals with the universal, universalism, the targeted universalism approach, which is very clearly laid out in one of the documents attached to the board docs. And making sure that we are focusing on our student populations, that we need to be providing additional supports to, to ensure that they have access to meaningful education, starting pre-K all the way up. So, I know that this is just the beginning, that this maybe actually was the easy part in terms of where, where we need to go. And I'm excited and committed to getting in and doing the work. Thanks.
Thank you. I too wanted to lift up some aspects, not just of public comment, but of things that I've heard over the course of the past months during this process. I think all of these three things I'm going to mention have been addressed to some extent. I talked about some of them, but I just wanted to lift them up again because I think they're important. Number one is the importance of focusing on aspects of student outcomes, other than what's been measured, what is measured on standardized tests. Parents and educators brought this up over and over again. I heard, what about independent thinking, creativity, or leading a productive life? What about wellness, belonging and young people's sense of self and identity, developing a love for learning, their ability to problem solve and navigate society individually and collectively? Those are just some of the things that came up that I heard. And again, I think that's been addressed to some extent in our process. The second, people I've spoken to, no mention of the achievement of black students, Latinx students, Pacific Islander students, English learners, special education students, other marginalized groups in the district. A couple of public commentators said it, but I heard it from a veteran principal who wrote to me and said, well, of course, we could just raise the district average proficiency rates, but underneath that, it could just be white kids or kids from high socioeconomic backgrounds improved and the gaps persist. So, I think that is an issue that I think the board is aware of and the superintendent is going to address in the interim goals. But we need to be focused on it. The third one is sort of a bigger picture thing around the lack of connection to the current reality. To some folks, this feels like we're just saying, let's go back and do school well again. When we're coming out of a global pandemic and we have an opportunity to not just do school well, but to really make this district, if we're going to meet our vision of saying, all kids are going to graduate as independent thinkers with a sense of agency, who've attained academic and creative skills, lead productive lives and contribute to our community, if that's going to be true for every single kid, we're going to need to do things really differently. And so, I think just to say that, that's, that's something we're as a board going to have to tackle is what does that really mean for us? If we're going to, if we're going to create the real change I think we all want. Sorry.
In my entrepreneurial experience, I've had many and always enjoyed fast-paced brainstorming sessions in which people throw ideas and engage in sometimes heated dialogue to fine tune those ideas. The workshop we had on October 15th was similar to that, and I'm happy to see this process take place at SFUSD at the board level. With that said, I do have three points that I'd like to make about what we have presented. First is what I stressed again and again during our workshop, that while we rightly focus most of our attention and resources on students who need the most support, we do not want to hold back or take resources away from those students who need more academic challenges. We don't want to be a district that serves only a minority of students, nor do we want to be a district that serves only the majority of students. We want to be a district that serves all students. The second point I want to make is that our school district cannot achieve these goals by ourselves. We must engage our students, parents and our communities to help us achieve these goals together. The last point that I wish to make is that we must change the way we do business. While it is a truism that more ambitious goals and need more investments, I challenge our district to fundamentally change the way we do business. We need to set goals and metrics for every dollar we spend. If a program is not getting results for a particular student population, it doesn't mean we take away the money. It means we modify the program. We cannot just keep feeling good about spending money to help students when those students are not actually being helped. I'm happy to see us arrive here today, but our work is far from being done and we need to be prepared for more candid discussions ahead to reform SFUSD to serve all of our students.
I too would like to appreciate my, my colleagues engaged in this process for the last months and Dr. Wayne as well, as well as AJ and his team from the Council of Great City Schools for helping to facilitate this process. A process, by the way, that many, many districts, urban districts across the country are engaging in right now. Some are just at the beginning of the process, some are in the middle like us, and many are reaching the finishing line and they are models for us to look at. As many of my colleagues have mentioned, we engage many, many folks in our community, not as many as we had hoped for. And actually, frankly, as somebody who's been here for quite a while, in these processes, trying to engage our community, we have never, I don't think ever engaged this many folks in this short amount of time. It has always been a really huge hurdle for us as a district and many urban districts to be able to get effective communication out and to be able to engage all of our stakeholders. It doesn't mean we can't do better, but that is the reality out in our district and many other districts. I think that the goals are very, very ambitious and that was one of the, we had, yeah, please do watch the six hour video. Comes with needles to poke out your eyes with, no, it was a really good meeting, actually. I really enjoyed it and I enjoyed the dialogue with my colleagues and with others during the process. But we did, we had a lot of discussion around what that goal should be and if it was attainable or not. And so, these are very ambitious goals and particularly for students and communities in our district who have historically been left behind, marginalized and, and frankly, pushed through the cracks. And so, keeping those interim goals and guardrails in mind and focusing on the student populations that need the most is imperative as we move forward in this process. Thank you.
I mean, building on everything that's been said before. I mean, one of the things that I do want to reiterate is that we are a governance board. We have one employee. We carry fiduciary responsibility to run this district well and to, to deliver on our obligation to provide quality public education to all of our students at all of our sites and to make sure that our, our district is operationally effective. And so, I also want to just acknowledge that we are focusing on interrupting what has not been successful for our students. When we look at the statistics and the outcomes around literacy and math and career and college readiness, I think there's a lot of interest among just about every community group we spoke to to change those numbers and to be, and to push and not just relax and look for iterations of change. That said, I do want to acknowledge that we have a lot of work to do operationally on just delivering on the basics, which we heard loud and clear in public comment, but we cannot move away from supporting our students and ensuring that our obligation to provide quality public education is not focused on. So, I've been really spending a lot of time thinking about growth mindset and what we ask our kids to do when things aren't working. And, and when they are realizing that they want to do something differently or the outcomes they expected were going to come from one thing turned out to be quite differently and really look at an interruption of how we're approaching decision-making. And as a parent in this district for over a decade, I have, I have ached, I have wanted, I have requested, I have demanded clarity from this district about what it wants our students to be able to do, how it is preparing them for their futures and how it's aligning its resources to do so. And this is a really a first step. We're building this muscle. This isn't something we've been doing consistently as a district. And so, I expect that we will continue to be in communication. This isn't just a one and done beginning of a conversation. This is ongoing.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I would just like to say a lot of appreciation and a lot of gratitude and a lot of apologies, I think, to our collective community. I think all the craziness and difficulty that we've been going through post-pandemic, during the pandemic, even pre-pandemic, right? I think it's really important for us to acknowledge all the ways that the district has really let down our communities and our families. And as a board member who ran during the pandemic because I was frustrated with the decisions that the board was making and the district and the lack of cooperation and dialogue and understanding and really that being my motivation for being on the board and really wanting to try to reflect that through all these processes. But understanding that what we're kind of showing now is the board trying to reset itself so it can be effective, it can be useful and we can accomplish things. One of the big challenges I One of the big challenges I've had with the board since my time working at Coleman Advocates and really putting pressure on the district to reform is that even when the board passes a policy, it doesn't get fully implemented. And especially it doesn't get implemented for our most neediest kids. And so this process is really about how do we change and adjust that? Knowing that we as board members have one seventh of the power of the district to kind of make things happen, but we really only have one employee. The reason it was so important for us to gauge in this process and to do it quickly is because these goals are the template and the outline for how we are going to gauge the success of the superintendent and whether or not he stays employed with the district or he is terminated from the district, right? Whether or not these goals work is something we're going to have to see and try because this is a new experiment for us. But in a lot of ways, we're open to the process of growing, learning, and being reflective of what we hear. So if these goals end up not being the right thing, we have the ability to revise them and change them. If the superintendent isn't focused on the equity of all students in the interim goals and is showing progress, we will hold him accountable for that. And I can promise you that we are all equally committed to that. We hired him because we have faith and confidence in him to work with our school community and meet the goals that we've set out. But if he doesn't, we definitely are willing to hold him accountable. And I feel like that's something that we have struggled with in the past. We had a lot of superintendents that acted with a lot of independence and freedom, but at the end of the day, they ended up leaving before we reached our goals and objectives. And all of us were kind of left holding the bag. And so that's what we're trying to change now. And so a lot of it does fall on us saying, we're going to put our trust in the superintendent and asking you to give us grace as we hold him accountable to make sure all of our families get what they need. I mean, we really start to see the things that the district has already committed to doing actually become practice. And not just things that we do one off, but things that we do well, I mean, excellent for our school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Just some reflections when we first embarked on this process. Every, each year I've been serving as a board member, I attend graduations. I love graduations. It just warms my heart to see the young people walking across the stage. I get to hand them their diploma, but it's empty. It's actually, you know, a faux diploma until they pick them up at their school sites. But as the young people walk across the stage, I look into their eyes and I congratulate them. And I also think to myself, I hope that what SFUSD has provided them in their education, in life skills, in seeing themselves beyond as an individual, but how they're going to contribute to their community, to the society and to really improve and live up to those values that they are raised within SFUSD. And there are moments and times that I have a big question. Did we, were we able to fully realize our mission and our vision for each and every student and young person as they walk across that stage? And so I am fully committed and have, since I've served on the board all my entire adult life around what that systems change is necessary to reach justice and equity for our communities and our students. And one thing that continues to be something that is a hope, but also a requirement is the accountability piece. And this is going to be one of those greatest public transparency and levers around both how the board, the superintendent, and overall as a district around how we are meeting those accountability and transparency. I'll close with, we are going to be embarking on the budget and budget allocation to meet those goals. Even when I chaired the budget and finance committee, we could not land on that process and how. And now we have a clear roadmap, or I would say at least the vision to make that actually realized that I have not seen since I've been involved as a district, in the district as a parent, as a parent advocate leader, and now as a school board member. I'll wrap up my reflections there. I wanted to also offer to public comment virtually because I believe there are a couple of hands that we weren't able to hear from. So I want to make sure that because this is such an important work and the adoption from the board, I wanted to open that back up for those remaining few hands we didn't hear from.
Okay, we're reopening virtual public comment for folks we didn't hear from. Please raise your hand and we will call on you. So I will call Jose Gloria MXB and Efraín Barrera. Again, Jose Gloria MXB and Efraín Barrera.
Hi, good evening commissioners. Thank you. We appreciate that. Several of us did get kicked off Zoom and weren't able to speak. I definitely just want to second all of the comments by the APEC members and parent leaders as well as the other folks that spoke in regards to equity. Where are the equity goals here? It feels like seeing these goals is just undoing years and years of work by many parents and youth over the years at Coleman Advocates for Children and Youth. And frankly, feels like it's taken us back in time. I hear that there are, you know, some pieces in the guardrails and interim goals that are attempting to get to that, but that is highly insufficient. And if this is going to be the tool that we're going to be using to keep the superintendent accountable, where are those equity goals in very clear, concrete and specific language, right? Where like APEC parent leader said, is there specifics around partnership, right? Co-creation with community and not just, you know, folks that are going to be consulted, right? No choice about us without us is something that we need to feel present and front and center in our goals and guardrails and something of this magnitude. I really urge you all to please not rush this process. Engage more community as partners to co-create this. It is something too important to rush.
Thank you, Jose. That is your time. Thank you.
Lori?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, I'm just gonna repeat what some other folks have said because obviously you cannot be said enough. Please pay your teachers, your educators. All goals are simply delusional if they cannot be executed and they cannot be executed if you don't pay people. Give them insurance, give them what they need, just to show up for work because this is incredibly illegal to this point. So if you guys, some of you guys have been parents before, even students in SFUSD, we can't expect anything to get done. If that doesn't happen, let's show our kids that we appreciate them by paying the people that educate them because nothing will get done, meaningfully done without that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm at B.
Ms. B? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, great. I am, I'm almost a little bit speechless. I do want to thank you for reopening the comments to those of us who could not, who got kicked off of Zoom and had to try and get back on. But I, I'm a little bit shocked. I don't know why I'm shocked. I have a lot of love for folks on this board. Some folks on this board in a lot of ways. And to hear this part of the meeting, it sounds so performative. We just went through a thing where people are talking about how they're going to leave the district. They're off their, you know, they feel unstable. Families can't stay here. Families are upset that their teachers can't stay here, et cetera. And then you start talking about your fiduciary responsibility. And it's almost like, oh, well, we had the empower to start and now we're just going to talk about all these guardrails and visions, et cetera. There's nothing in there about equity. That's what you're using to evaluate the superintendent according to you all. But there's nothing in there that is, feels real and this feels performative. And the self-congratulatory tone of that you worked Saturdays and you worked weekends and you wordsmithed things. I can appreciate that you probably did work really hard, but your teachers are working really hard and your teachers are having to come.
You, Ms. B, that is your time. Thank you for sharing.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for the public comment. I would like to, for most into this, but I do want to elevate everything that has been said today. Many, many months to get teachers paid. I mean, we definitely have to address this, but I know that this specific point is around the, you know, this, this work that you have been embarking on. And I want to, you know, elevate the, I guess, what it has taken to get to this point. I actually did have a chance to listen to the October fifteen meeting and I want to highlight a point of conversation for your facilitator. I can't recall his name. He was so amazing in the sense of how he talked about what required to adopt seventy percent literacy rate across all students, right? In the way in which the resources have to be aligned to correspond to that approach. And so I want to make sure that folks, you know, understand the intentionality behind it. Obviously, as you all have said, this is the starting point, but I'm definitely excited about the, you know, what it will take to get to that, you know, if taken into account the, all the issues that are underlying, which is why our students continue to underperform, specifically our focal group students. So I welcome the vision, the leadership, and I definitely, it's time to, you know, pull up your, you know, you know, put everything that it will take to get this, to get this done, of course, in partnership with our educators, in partnership with our families, in partnership with our community partners.
Thank you.
This work is.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment.
Thank you so much. Before I shift to discuss, so what's next, I wanted to lift up a couple of things. One is the interim goals are also included in board docs. We will make sure that they're also accessible on the website. So that those interim goals, while our work in progress from the superintendent also has those targeted benchmarks, as well as how we look at particularly for our focal student populations and really how we're going to get to those broader goals. I also want to, on the theme of the interim goals, for clarity, that the board does not adopt the interim goals. They are led by the superintendent. And at the same time, I know that there will be, continue to have engagement from the board and certainly the superintendent can talk about the process and what's next. Going back to the presentation, first slide twenty-eight. Around the twenty, around what's next. So once we clarify those priorities, next slide, please. Slide twenty-nine. Monitoring progress and the board will shift there. Well, and then next slide, please. While the superintendent leads the execution, I'd like to have Dr. Wayne share with us a bit more about what it means to lead the work moving forward.
Thank you, President Lamb. And so first, as she shared, once the board adopts its goals and guardrails, I need to develop interim goals and guardrails. And these will be the indicators we use to ensure we're making progress and to which I will be held accountable. And so attached to this presentation, or attached to this agenda item are the most recent draft of our interim goals and guardrails. And that's really where we, you should see the evidence of our targeted universalism approach and how we're addressing specific needs that have come up through our listening and learning, both in the board's process as well as what I'll share later in my report. And, and so these, this current draft will be updated based on discussions from tonight and we'll be working on to finalize by no later than January. Because then we shift into the, our planning season where, as you see, a next step is to determine how to best implement the goals and guardrails and as well align our budget and operation to achieve those goals. And then we start measuring and reporting on progress and learning and making adjustments. And so we're going to be continuing to revisit this work and I appreciate that the board has established a goal to stay focused on student outcomes by having at least half of the time we spend at board meetings be discussing our progress in, around student outcomes. And so actually, at the next board meeting, we're going to have our first meaningful session on this. The most recent state test scores were released and we'll have a time, some time to go more in depth about those, recognizing that again, that's not the driver of what's happening in the classroom, but there are important measures of our overall progress as a district. And so then those are next steps. I do just want to share my appreciation for the board bringing this forward. When I was considering coming to the district, I reviewed all the input that the community shared in the superintendent's profile and it asked that there was clearly a message from the community to focus on student learning. And it's what made me very interested in this position as someone whose career has been focused on student learning and making sure that we're putting our students at the center, what's happening in the classroom at the center. It seemed like this could be a good fit. So I appreciate the board then following through on that commitment, not just in words, but actually putting together a vision, values, goals and guardrails that reflect that commitment to student learning. So you'll hear more in a bit on my presentation about how, what we'll be thinking about around working towards these goals. And that those are the next steps that will occur.
Thank you. I want to recognize that the board's hardest work is yet to come. And wanted to be able to express that while the adoption tonight of the goals, the values and goals and guardrails, it's really the beginning. Next slide, please. And that's something that other district leaders that have implemented the effective governance practices have warned us that it's going to be hard. It's going to be difficult and it's really going to require fundamental changes in our mindset, how we work. And at times and community members may be confused, unclear and upset by the changes. And it is imperative that we as a board then communicate and continue to be in dialogue in community around the goal, the board's governance work. At the same time, the leaders have also expressed that and stated that if the board fully commits to this process, we can improve student learning and their outcomes. So I'd like to open it up for a final round of any additional comments from my board, from my colleagues. And I will be asking for a vote. Yes, Keshav Alexander.
I just wanted to sort of echo something that's come up a couple of times, which is around, you know, the aspect of this be feeling performative or the, like, you know, is this really going to happen? And I, and I think Vice President Bogus, you spoke to it really eloquently earlier. I think the proof of this is in the action and the results. So I, I actually think that for the, for the public, I'd say, I think the feedback is really good. I'd say, keep giving feedback on the interim goals and guardrails. But the important thing is keep holding us accountable, right? I mean, if, if, if we don't start seeing progress toward these results, it's, Vice President Bogus said it better than I did, but I think that's
Vice President Bogus said it better than I did, but I think that's, to me, it's like, that's where the real proof of the of the work is. And so let's not get caught up in wordsmithing. Let's you know, let's, let's actually hold let's all be held accountable and you all should hold us accountable for for the results moving forward.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you. I want to note too, again, as President Lamb did, that the interim goals themselves are a work in progress. And but if you do look on on board docs and you look at the interim goal for kindergarten end of year benchmark, it reads the percentage of African American and Pacific Islander kindergarten students will increase to eighty percent by June of twenty twenty four. So that's a specific target for focused students or focus group of students that we know right now are nowhere near that level. And we do also know that African American students who don't reach that benchmark or that, you know, are proficient have almost a hundred percent illiteracy rate at the third grade level. So this is an important kinder end of year benchmark.
Yeah, I mean, that that also reminded me. I mean, one of the things that we've been talking about too is to date, our, our district has been operating kind of as a maintenance district. So if you come in kindergarten ready, you'll probably stay on grade level throughout your time here in the district. But if you don't, there's not a real demonstrated change in in getting proficient and being brought up to speed and having the supports that were needed. And so this is really a commitment to interrupt what we've been doing and reflect upon it and to and to continue to stay in conversation, to not just you know, put a year deadline in the future that we're gonna somehow magically come back together and in, you know, in that timeframe and it will have happened. This is a continuous improvement commitment and I do want to, I mean, I think that it is important that this is a seven member commitment alongside the superintendent, because this is a big shift and and yeah, I mean, it's a necessary shift.
I just wanna comment on the interim goals, even though we had some discussion about it last week, particularly around English learners and how important that we also look at how we're supporting and being even more targeted around our Spanish English learners as we look at that interim goal of one point three and that's some of the conversations there. And I think we also had further conversations around goal three around the college and career and really starting to look at, you know, how do we embody yes, to graduation rates, improving that continuously. And an on track graduation, but there's also so much more of how we're supporting our our high school students and our young people as they, you know, graduate and go into either college or their explore exploration around career. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for further discussion there as well. So seeing none, we have, I like to ask for a motion again for the approval of
We moved it, I think.
So at this time, I'd like to call for a roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander. Yes, Vice President Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu.
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
President Lamb.
Yes.
Seven S.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you to the SFUSD community. The work is just going to be just getting started. So at this time, I'd like to shift and call upon Dr. Wayne for his hundred and seventeen day entry plan.
Thank you, Board President Lamb. Good evening, everyone again. And I appreciate you moving this item up just because it's a discussion item, but it gives me an opportunity to share what I've heard as I've done my listening and learning while you've been going through this process to update our vision, values, goals and guardrails. And I actually aligned my entry plan to be a part of this process, knowing you were you were embarking on this. And so if you go to the next slide, it's the hundred and seventeen days entry plan, because when today is the day that that the board had targeted even before my starting and bringing forward the vision and values and goals. And so, as I said, I wanted to align my time of listening, learning to help inform this. And so just tonight, I know we spent a lot of time sharing this. So I just wanted to briefly bring this forward to explain, you know, why, you know, you know, why talk about this now and what I'll be sharing and really, you know, want to bring this back to, again, what is happening in the classroom and our student and our focus on student outcomes, as well as share what I've heard aligns with what the Board of Education has put forward in its vision and values and goals and guardrails. And so I'll just gonna briefly share some findings, as well as the limitations of this effort and then share next steps. And so again, my priority has been to both listen to understand while also tackling urgent and important issues. And if you go to, sorry, go to the next couple of slides, go to the next one. And after that, there we go. And so, you know, we, when I started, as I started, we we definitely were facing some immediate challenges, one of them being ensuring that we have staff in place. And just in a moment, we'll be bringing forward to the board ratification, our approval of a six percent pay raise for educators, a critical step to recruiting and retaining our valued staff. Also, overall, we had a successful launch to the school year. And although we have not seen the the progress we need, have tried to have taken swift action on empower, recognizing there's much to be done. But most importantly, you know, cutting checks for people who have not received pay as well as reassigning central office staff to support the intervention. And then new, as I was starting, it was important to ensure that there's a strong and productive relationship with the board and appreciate the team effort that you've the team effort in which you've been engaged around the vision and values, as well as the other areas of focus that we've been discussing over the past four months. So th- those were just a few areas where, you know, some of the urgent issues that I've been trying to work on. If you go to the previous slide, one, one, one back, my listening and learning has, no, one forward, my listening and learning has this slide, thank you. My listening and learning has made a lot of time out in the community. I've had a hundred plus meetings, either one on one or in a small groups, four town halls in our schools, visited twenty schools, as well as just reviewed a lot of documents and just really appreciated the opportunity to talk with community members, particularly our students. I've stopped by the Student Advisory Council meeting a few times and just talking to our students in the schools really provides an insight on what we're doing. And if you go to the next slide, just to distinguish the the Board of Education, a very specific task to understand the community's vision and values and sure, share the board's draft vision and values, as well as goals and guardrails, to bring forward tonight, the the document that they approved. My goals were to meet community and staff members and really hear about people's experience in this district and understand our strengths and need to share what I've learned in order to build relationships in the district and also inform our district strategy. And so I wanna highlight the two key takeaways from these first hundred and seventeen days. If you go to the next slide, there is a lot of conversation and I wanna share two key takeaways that won't be a surprise to anybody and they shouldn't be because it is what I'm reflecting back, I heard from the community. One, there's a deep commitment in San Francisco Unified to address the equity issues we face and the inequitable student outcomes we see by race, by language, by of our, with our students, with disabilities and by students socioeconomic status, that everyone wants to ensure that we're focusing our time and energy on those on addressing those issues. While at the same time, I hear a lot about how proud people are to be in San Francisco, how this is a world class city, but with many challenges, including wanting to make sure we're offering a world class education. What I want to highlight and what I've learned is that people in this community many times talk about these two ideas as if they're there's a tension between them. And really, as we move forward, my long term goal is that it's clear we're pursuing equity and excellence, that we cannot achieve equity and eliminate our inequitable outcomes without providing an excellent education. So it shouldn't be seen as an either or, but how we're working together towards that goal of equity and excellence. That's a long term goal. What I heard in the short term, loud and clear, is that we need to rebuild trust in the district. Trust with our our families, with our students, with our teachers and our staff, that we are really putting students first and organizing ourselves to support students and schools and to be, so they can be focused on our goals and guardrails. And I know we have a ways to go on that. But it's a foundational piece because for us to do the work in meeting our goals on student outcomes, there needs to be a foundation of a sense of trust that that people are gonna get what they need as those basic, you know, needs met so that they can focus on student learning. Those are the key takeaways, like I said, should be familiar themes with ones that really stood out to me in in all my conversations. I did get to hear, if you go to the next slide, a lot on these key topics. And where the focus of our town hall discussions, if you go to the next slide, this is included in the board documents. I just wanna highlight first, just around community relationships, parents and families are eager to participate, to be partners with us. The same thing with our, the city and the business community. And so we wanna take advantage of of that willingness to partner and work together to moving forward towards our district goals. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that the, you know, again, around operations and finance, we know the payroll issues, but also just an overall sense of wanting there to be transparency about our finances, staffing and decision making. And I think that would be a key strategy to rebuild trust. So if you go to next steps, the next slide. Okay, so over the next, so you see, we've, you know, we've had these community meetings. We've established the vision, values and goals. You've seen the draft interim goals and guardrails. Over the next six months, we need to both reorientate, reorient ourselves to those new goals and guardrails. That's the change that the board has been talking about that you should see in our actions and when we bring forward a budget, when when we talk about our LCAP, things are going to look different. And then we also need to use this time to regain and rebuild that trust, you know, starting with empower, as well as many other issues that have been been surfaced. And then if you go to the next slide, specifically what that looks like is, you know, finalizing the goals and guardrails, looking at our staffing at the district office and filling some key positions, analyzing our budget to make sure for next year, we propose a budget where the alignment to the goals is clear. Looking at program alignment to those goals and revising the LCAP. And then really, next school year is where we're implementing our goal aligned systems and practices. And that's why those interim goals and guardrails are actually the, is for the twenty three, twenty four school year, recognizing we need some time to put that in place. So that that's a high level overview of my listening and learning. You know, again, I highlighted the number of people I've talked to in schools I've visited. But still, I I know there's more work to be done to get a full picture of this both amazing district, as well as all the needs we have. And as we're realigning around these goals, I'll continue to do that. And you should expect to see me still be very visible out in schools, out in the community, having conversations, because that's how I learn what it means to put in place strategies that are student centered and school focused. So thank you for the opportunity to share a bit earlier. And I hopefully you can see how this is going to inform the development of the strategies to meet our goals and operationalize our guardrails.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. I'd like to open up for a public comment. Oh, before we do so, I just want to acknowledge that we are going beyond our nine thirty time of policy of three hour meetings. So just wanted to acknowledge that we are extending past the three hour mark.
Thank you. We have two speakers for this item in person, Leader Fisher and Selena Chu. You can come to the podium, please.
Hello, hi. My name is Selena Chu. I'm a pair of two SFUSD students. I'm here today to congratulate everyone here for doing such a great job for the past couple of months. I think Superintendent Wayne has done more in four months than the previous superintendent has done ever since he was hired back in twenty seventeen. He has met more parent advisory groups than anyone else. He has gone to probably seen more students than anyone else. So I hope that listening continues. And I was at the enrollment fair this past Saturday. I hear so many parents coming up to me and they are telling me good news. The building of trust has been raised, you're restoring that trust. They're coming up to me and they're saying that I wanted to come to SFUSD now. I am seeing the past couple of meetings. I have faith in you guys doing the right thing. So good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Wayne. On behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, thank you very much for meeting with us. We appreciated our session with you. A quote that's been in my head tonight is those who fail to learn from history are condemned to repeat it, right? So we've talked a lot about trust, holding each other accountable. You know, coming back with more information and more feedback. And I, one of the outcomes on the slide about the difference between the superintendent's work and the board's work has been the outcome for the superintendent was cultivating strong relationships and building the trust. And I just wanna remind everyone that you don't build trust, you don't cultivate relationships with one session. You do it by showing up over and over again, listening, taking people's feedback into account and using that to drive change, right? That's how you earn trust. Until we get to that point, this is all performative. And that's why you hear that word used over and over again. And the reason I use the quote about doomed to repeat it is for many of us who have been at this microphone for years, this isn't the first time I'm saying this. So we look forward to your success as we move forward over the next few years.
That concludes in person public comment.
At this, at this time, we'll hear virtual public comment. Again, we will model virtually what we're doing in person. So I will call the first four hands that I'm seeing raised, Tom, Ms. B, Ms. Marshall and Bavette. So again, Tom, Ms. B, Ms. Marshall and Bavette. Tom, go ahead, please.
Uh, yeah, parent and teacher in the district. I'm just curious why I haven't seen any of the commissioners or the superintendent can our school. So twenty schools is not that much. And how are those schools chosen? And if you, was it just, yeah, I don't know. I just think it's kinda crazy how I keep saying on this board for a couple years to come visit the school. I'm just not sure there's something against the school or or when you actually come to the school, are you actually gonna talk? Are you just gonna walk around and be all smiles like? That's why it does feel performative, like Ms. Fisher said earlier, because you make it that way. And then when people call out that, you don't acknowledge it. So please step up.
Thank you. Ms. B.
Oh, hello. Thank you for taking my comment again. I'm reflecting on the term student learning and how narrow it's become in the way that it's being used tonight. And I'm really hopeful that Superintendent Wayne will will reexpand that because it's so much deeper than measurements of reading or writing, especially as measured by test, testing agencies. And then who's on a graduation stage with you and who isn't? Students are learning in our classrooms all the time and by watching us. And they are really learning by what we say and what we don't, what we lift up, what we silence and what we sidestep and what we pretend doesn't exist. And as a member of the public, as somebody who went to SFUSD and now is an employee in it, I hope that you all will keep in mind that we are also doing that with you. I hope that you all will keep in mind that we are also doing that with you. We are watching and that is how we are noticing our own learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Wayne, for sharing. I, on behalf of the NAACP and Alliance of Black School Educators, we're very pleased that you've come to our NAACP meeting. We look forward to you working with the Alliance of Black School Educators. However, this plan, as I said earlier, doesn't feel good, it doesn't feel right, doesn't feel like African-American and all our undisturbed students will will do better with this plan. I hope so. And I know that you already know that you're standing there or sitting there rather, on behalf of all the superintendents have come before you. And they all have done some good things and they all have done some things that need to be, need to, that left addition needing some improvement. But my main concern is that that every child leans our district, reading, doing mathematics at high levels and go on to have a productive life in society. And we need to make sure that happens for every child who walks through the door. I am feeling very discouraged when I go to some of our elementary schools with the blatant racism that I feel that I see there. I don't know how I choose to make it any day. So there's a lot of work, there's lots of work to do in this district. And the main thing is that every child has a right
Thank you.
to quality education. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bavette? Bavette?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. In the first 717 days, the Board of Education and Superintendent have already broken the trust of families, staff and students. You've hired a consultant who said equity audits are junk science. This is why there is no clear outline of how you will achieve equity. A.J. Crabhill, billing himself as Student Outcomes Evangelist, is the consultant that recently led the work on restructuring your board governance, as well as these goals and guardrails that failed. And he is a failed startup entrepreneur that dropped out of college and never even studied education. With so little experience in education, why did you guys even hire him? His, his extensive experience is in closing schools. As a president of the Board of Education of Kansas City, Missouri, he closed 26 schools, resulting in 700 job cuts, as well as when he was at the Texas Education Agency, he closed additional 40% of schools in black and brown neighborhoods. And this is the legacy he left behind of worsened educational outcomes for our most disadvantaged students using the same formula of test scores and S-Back scores. During the last board meeting, Superintendent Wayne shared a map of schools that he stated are too expensive to keep open or repair. And that map above shows potential sites for school closures. There has been zero transparency as to this process despite Commissioner Mo Tibidi and Aunt Sue and Lisa Weisman Ward
Thank you for that. I'm sorry to have to cut you off. That is your time. Thank you. And Jose? Jose?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, this is Jose Luis de Cuma here with Common Advocates for Children in Youth. Definitely want to echo some of those comments. There's definitely a lot of us that have been here over the years and definitely want to thank you, Superintendent, for being out there and getting, you know, out there with our people, our parents, our teachers and everyone that is working with our students every day and hope that that is something that continues and that is consistent. We definitely want to make sure that we're learning from our past and not repeating these mistakes and that we're not regressing, right, as a school district, similarly to what some of the political forces that have been moving in our city and around our country to take us back in time, right, against equity, right? And we want to make sure that we are prioritizing our black and brown, our Samoans, API community, those with special needs, foster youth and many others. And we don't leave them behind by focusing on these particular metrics of just numbers and make sure that we're talking about the love that our kids need in our families. And I want to highly encourage you to become a fixture at our continuation schools, at our court schools, at Hilltop with our young girls.
Thank you, Jose. I'm sorry to have to cut you off. That is your time.
Hear from our young people that are at the bottom.
That concludes, sorry, virtual public comment.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for Superintendent Wayne? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Or go ahead, Vice President Bogus.
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. I think for me, just, I think lifting up the urgency that the community feels where the time it's taking you to get grounded and get a plan established, people are just very anxious and ready to see it. And I think for me, I would just ask for the public not to give us blind faith or trust, but definitely give us grace and time for the superintendent to fully develop his interim goals and to share that, as well as to connect with folks in the community so that you can see the vision that I think we all kind of collectively share for the district, but definitely understanding that there's still a lot of time and opportunity and work that needs to be done before we can ask folks just to trust us as we embark on a new process. So I'm definitely willing to be open to to critical comments and thoughts. But just know we're committed to figuring out how to do what's best for students and our schools and our staff.
Thank you, Vice President Bogus. And at that, at this time, I'm going to bring us back to our action items of item two, 2210 to 5SP, to the approval of the unaudited actual financial reports, adoption of the GAN Limit Resolution for the San Francisco Unified School District and County Office of Education for fiscal year 2021-22. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second.
Salute. Second. Thank you, President Lamb, and I want to welcome Megan Wallace, our head financial officer, who's conducting her last presentation here at the Board of Education. And she'll is transitioning to a new role in a different organization. So at the end, we'll share our appreciations. But first, to get down to business, if you want to put on the presentation, I just want to introduce that these are the unaudited actuals. And so this is a required report, one of the five required reports through their budgeting office. And if you want to hold up Ms. Wallace, the unaudited actuals, you could see they're very thick reports because we need to send them to the state to make sure we have all the information included. But what the unaudited actuals are basically, you know, what, what they're, they're now looking back on the 2122 school year and the next step in finalizing our financial reports for those years. So back in June, we closed the books and the fiscal year ended on June 30. So first, staff goes through and looks at all the finances to understand where we are. And then we have an external auditor who comes through and audits, and those become our audited actuals. So tonight is, so the report has all the required elements. Tonight, the presentation is just going to provide a high-level overview of where we are now compared to where we were when we last reported, which really second interim was when we last reported the, you know, the financials for last school, last school year. You'll see where we are now and then a little bit of what it means moving forward. So at that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wallace.
You, Dr. Wayne. Good evening, commissioners. Next slide, please. So just as Dr. Wayne had mentioned, this is a report based on the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. And we are required as a school district and a county office of education to submit our report to the Board of Edu, sorry, to the California Department of Education by October 15. Due to this timing of the board meeting, it is after October 15, we have been in communication with CDE that upon board approval, we would be submitting our official records. Next slide, please. So just in the following slides, as Dr. Wayne mentioned, I'm going to provide a high-level overview. I actually have three different components of reporting. First, I'm going to start with the County Office of Education, then focus on the district fund, including all resources, both restricted and unrestricted, and then dive into a little bit more detail on the district unrestricted. So to begin, this table provides details around the county office fund. And as you can see, that this is a comparison between the unaudited actuals and the projected. So just, I'm just going to provide this summary just for this table, that as you can see, that there are, it's a comparison of the actuals and projected and what the difference is, but looking first at revenues, expenditures and the resulting net surplus or shortfall. So did we generate more revenue than we did spend funds, then we would have a surplus? If we generated less revenues than expenditures, then we would have a shortfall. And that compared with our beginning fund balance would tell us what our, sorry, compared with our beginning fund balance would tell us what our ending fund balance is for the year. So in this table, I really highlighted that ending fund balance. I just want to give you the takeaway that we actually improved in the county office fund by $4.1 million. And as you can see, looking at the revenues, we actually generated 0.7 million or $700,000 less than what had originally been projected. But then that shortfall in revenues was offset by expenditure savings, resulting in a $4.1 million improvement. But as you can see, under the ending fund balance, those funds are allocated in different ways that we have to meet our economic uncertainty reserve. Some of those funds are restricted, meaning that they have to go towards very specific programs. And then there's the undesigned portion, which is unrestricted. And you can see that there's $2.9 million now available that I would anticipate can be used to help absorb, you know, board priorities, one of which being the increased spending for our staff from recent and proposed labor agreements. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this slide provides details of the district general fund, including all resources, both restricted and unrestricted. And I just want to call your eyes to the ending fund balance, which is a $56.3 million improvement compared to what we had previously projected. And that's the result of a $26.7 million decline in anticipated revenues. That's really solely in restricted resources that we had budgeted for, but either did not receive due to timing or or due to inaccuracies in our forecasting. But then that's actually offset by a significant savings in expenditures. And I would say that the reduced spending generally was a result of two areas, either ongoing vacancies in staff or slow implementation of programs, either on purpose or because the district had delays in implementation. An example of a program that we did not implement on time, not on time, in this, in fiscal year 2122, was the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, for example, that we, we knew that we would not actually begin spending in fiscal year 2122 and we purposely had those savings carry over into the next year. So that result of a $56.3 million improvement in our ending fund balance, as you can see, is distributed between, I'll go ahead and call out the restricted and undesigned portions. So the restricted resources that are available, 47.4 million, really are in those programs like the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, we have an A to G grant, an emergency connectivity reserve. So we have very specific ways that those funds will need to be used. But then the undesigned portion is unrestricted, and I'm going to go ahead and dive into that in the next slide. So now looking at the unrestricted general fund, as you can see in the, oh, sorry. Let me see. Thank you. Yes, thank you. So in the unrestricted general fund, we're seeing an ending improvement of $8.9 million compared to previous projections. And that's really a result of factors both on our revenues and expenditures. As you can see, we received $13.3 million less in anticipated revenues and also had 20.2, 22.2 million in expenditure savings. I'm going to go ahead and explain in more detail both of those elements. Next slide, please. So on the revenue side, we, as I said, we received $13.3 million less in revenues. And that's a combination really of three factors. First, you can see that our federal revenues were $12 million less than we had anticipated. And that is because we submitted reimbursement requests to FEMA, but the timing of that reimbursement is much slower than we had anticipated. So we are expecting to receive reimbursements, but we did not receive them in this, in fiscal year 2122. So that did result in a shortfall compared to our projections. However, I do anticipate that there will be good news in fiscal year 2223 with regard to FEMA because we did not budget for any reimbursements in fiscal year 2223. However, on the local revenue side, there are two things going on. You can see that there are actually some really good improvements on those local revenues, sales tax in particular. I'll go ahead and call that, call that out as an indicator of some positive movement in our local economy. The sales tax was so much higher than we had assumed. Leases and revenues also had an improvement. But I'll go ahead and call out the adjustment of $7.5 million was actually a new governmental accounting standards board requirement to account for the value of our funds in our, in the city treasury if we were to sell them. And just due to market fluctuations, that's a lower amount. And that's really, it's a reporting requirement. And it's, it's new. It'll, it won't be something that we would see impacting the district's revenues on an ongoing basis. But you can see that it does directly offset the improvements in other local revenues. So overall, the revenue picture does show a negative amount. But I would say that my hope would be that, as I mentioned, that the federal funds would come in in fiscal year 2223 and also that that GASP adjustment won't be an ongoing impact to the district's revenues. Next slide, please. So on the expenditure side, as I noted, $22.2 million in expenditure savings was a result of some bad news in the sense that we over-expended on our operating costs, particularly with regard to salaries. It was really difficult for staff to track and project personnel costs in this last year because there were so many vacancies and also due to delays and being able to post personnel costs into our financial system. So we were working for a period of time, really not having a good way of building out projections for staff costs. And because of that, we actually did not build in savings assumptions for benefits. So so the numbers are a little bit odd. And I would say that that is really primarily because we were working with so many unknowns. And so the odd details of having overspending on salaries but underspending on benefits was really just staff's best effort to not overstate savings on personnel costs. So, you know, the net effect of, of where we landed with personnel costs wasn't too far off from the original budget. I would say that the big focus here really should be on the contributions to special education. As you can see, there was a $25 million reduction in the contribution from the unrestricted general fund to our special education programs. And that was really a combination of trying to maximize restricted resources. So to the extent that there were new state program funding that came in, we shifted expenses to try to draw down those funds. But also, we were just dealing with high levels of vacancies. And that resulted in lower And that resulted in lower personnel costs that ultimately led to a lower requirement for the general fund contribution to our special education programs. Next slide, please. Dr. Wayne.
Thank you. So just wanted to highlight this slide. When, in the first time I was at the board meeting in August, we did. We had to present a forty five day revise. And I shared how important it is that when we're presenting our budget information, that is very clear. That from one presentation to the next, what changed and why? So at least at a high level, we're being transparent with the community as well as with the board on what's different. So this is a chart, you saw it in that August revision. That it's the first column there, you saw this a similar chart where in that first column, it was actually the adopted budget, the June adopted budget. And then we showed how it was changed for August and then the next three years. So now in the first column, you see the August revised budget that we presented in August. And now you're seeing what's being adjusted based on the audited actuals. And I'll just actually speak to this and you can go to the the next slide. Just you see the big. The big adjustment here is we do have that increase in our beginning of fund balance, so that's in green, the hundred and fifty nine million. But we also have an increase in our expenditures based on the agreements which we're bringing forward. Either the board has approved already or that we're bringing forward for approval tonight. And again, that represents a significant investment in our staff, both to demonstrate how much we value them as well as support our efforts to recruit and retain. So you can see that we are deficit spending, that's what's in red. So if you look at the row D. So we are spending more than we bring in, but we had, and we have a significant fund balance to help offset some of those costs. And so you'll see that fund balance decreases each of the next three years, but it doesn't go in the negative. So that does give us time to do planning to realign our resources so that we're not deficit spending while meeting our goals. But it was a priority, as we we discussed back in August, to invest some of our fund balance and additional revenue into supporting our staff. So again, this is a high level where you can see the shifts from one presentation to the next. And then Ms. Wallace will talk about next steps, and then it's time for any questions, and then we seek your approval on this item.
So just to close this out, I just want to reiterate that our ending fiscal year twenty one, twenty two ending fund balance exceeded the interim. Projections, and that was a combination of lower revenues as well as expenditure savings. And really continuing to maximize our use of restricted resources, particularly one-time federal and state funds. As next steps, we will be submitting the report to CDE upon board approval. But really, the next time that this board will receive an update on the district's budget. Projections will be in December with the first interim report, and that will take into account the updated factors that Dr. Wayne just outlined. Thank you so much. I'm happy to answer questions.
I'll do public comment first.
Yes, we'll open up for public comment.
We related one card, and it's Pavette. It looks like she's online, so.
Please raise your hand if you care to give a public comment on the un-audited actuals report update or un-audited actuals report. If seen two hands. The vet.
I believe my comment was going to be on the facilities consent item, but in terms of this year's financials, I'm going to pass right now. I did have some questions about the use of P funds and would like to get some more clarity around that and how that fund was used. Because how it was described and shared in online in the board docs. It shows that specific programs that were supposed to go towards A through G support as well as MTSS, which is for mental health support. Actually got cut this past year and in the upcoming years. And so, and also multi-language pathways, which is really kind of upsetting. So would like to hear some more input about what's happening with that and if that money has been put back yet.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall.
Thank you so much. My concerns are that when a teacher takes students on a field trip, they must account for every child and bring that student back to the school site. Yeah, if there's a disaster, the principal.
Ms. Marshall, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We are hearing public comment on the.
I'm getting to it. If a building, if a building. Disaster, they must account for every person to hear, to hear that we didn't know how many employees were on board. To hear they were doing deficit spending, to hear that there's special ed issues. Well, of course, it would be because of the system that you have. So I hope going forward that you will repair this so it should never happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianda.
Good evening again, board commissioners. My name is Brianda Batiste, and right now I'm speaking as just a mom, as a former employee of a company. When you say that your goal is employer retention. What is happening right now in the district completely contradicts that. You can't retain employees if you're not paying them. So employer retention is your true goal, work on ensuring that your employees are getting paid. And things will begin to change in the positive direction. But who wants to stay someplace when they're not getting paid? Ask yourselves individually and collectively, would you stay someplace when you are getting paid?
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, Brianda. We are responding to the un-audited actuals report right now.
And that was part of what they said was it was for employer retention, but if we're not retaining employees, if we're not paying them.
Thank you. Lawrence.
Hello, commissioners. Hello, Superintendent Wayne. Thank you so much for this presentation. Head Wallace, I've appreciated all your time. You've been able to give us your time and attention by emails, answering questions. In LCAPs and other forums, I know that this is a, this is a bunch of slides that represent a ton of work and a lot of trade offs. And I have a lot of the same kind of questions brought up by the other public comment, but I recognize that. Hopefully we'll get another chance to get into some of the questions of how these trade offs are made and how these situations will. Effect planning going forward, but just again, just showing my appreciation for all the work you did with, with getting things going in the tough years. And working with all the questions from all the different people. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. Colleagues, do you have any comments or questions? Vice President Bogus?
I was wondering if the superintendent or someone else could talk a little bit about the impact of the cost savings that were generated from the lack of positions. And kind of how that might have impacted school sites. And I also think it would be helpful if we could kind of just talk a little bit about some of the reductions to programming and things that kind of happened last year. And I guess their relationship to the numbers we have now versus enrollment and attendance and like all those things, if that makes sense as a question.
I would say that that the savings on the expenditure side is not a good indication in the sense that. It does mean programs not provided to our students. I think an example I'll call out is our P funding. That there was, we did see an accumulation of P slam dollars while schools were closed. That was a particularly difficult time to implement sports libraries, arts, music programs. But looking at this last year, you would think that we could provide those programs more fully with students back, back on site. But I think that it's just simply been hard to bring people in the door to provide the services is is one example of the challenges. So I would say that it's a relief to have an offset to the loss in revenue, right? From a looking at a table and seeing how the numbers balance out, it's relieved that they're to the positive. It means that this board has more flexibility in having resources to implement your priorities. So that's great, but on the saving side, it does mean lost opportunities for having provided services and supports to students.
I'll say that another area is, and in the special education savings, we saw. And continue to see a lot of vacancies in pair educators, correct? And that's an area where definitely services that aren't provided. And there's the cost in learning and then the the cost of the district also because we need to find a way to provide those services.
Commissioners, Alexander Weissman Ward and then Matomany.
Just, yeah, thank you. Following up on that, the question around the difference in expenditures. I guess what I'm confused about is I'm looking back at our second interim from last year. Why did we not anticipate this or why, you know what I mean? Like, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand why this occurred. Without a better anticipation of it. Does that make sense?
Well, I will say that on the personnel side, we did build in additional salary savings. Knowing that there were a significant number of vacancies. What you'll see with some of the numbers is that we went over on salaries but under on benefits. But, you know, we're, we were really trying to do our best to estimate what the costs could be. Because honestly, we couldn't see what the financial costs were. We were looking at positions that were available, or sorry, positions that were vacant and trying to extrapolate as to what the cost would be. And then the savings, you know, within the budget. We didn't have the financial data to see what salary and benefits costs were occurring month over month. Because we were not able to transfer the payroll data into our financial system until we were in the process of closing out the year. So just to tell a quick story about another impact of empower. As everybody was working to try to figure out how to get people paid, it meant that. Resources that might have been going in to figure out how to convert that data from the payroll system to the financial system. Weren't put into place until we were really hitting these deadlines around needing to start to close our books. And that meant that the the folks on my teams, both budget and accounting, were really trying to do their best to estimate what the actual cost of personnel would be. So it's not a pretty picture. Those numbers are, don't. You know, they don't make a lot of sense, you know, at first glance, but I will tell you that they're the result of just trying to take FTEs and estimated costs. And build out, you know, a forecast. And so if you look at the salary costs and the benefits together, that'll give you a closer picture of how far off we were. And I would say in the scheme of things. That we weren't too far off. On the special education side, I would say it's a little bit different because we, while we did build in salary savings. We also didn't want to be too aggressive with our savings assumptions, just given the importance of those programs. And also, as we closed out the books for the fiscal year, we were looking for opportunities to maximize restricted resources that we hadn't built into the second interim. So that is an important factor, both for the special education programs and for the unrestricted general fund.
So those, some of those decisions got made after March, basically. Yeah, yeah. And the reason I'm asking is I just think moving forward for the superintendent and us, I just think it's like, this is something we've gotten from the public over and over again around transparency. And so when we see like a seven percent of our budget difference in expenditures, it just starts to raise all these questions of wait a minute, what's going on there? And so I just think we really have to figure this out in order to have good projections. And when we change, that we can explain why we're changing, you know? So thanks.
Thank you and good luck after your, your, your departure from the district. So I have a question because I'm a rule follower. I know that it appears this, what you mentioned, this was due October fifteenth. And it looks like it was submitted to the state superintendent with the promise that it would come back approved. And so my question is, are we, I think this is the first time, at least for me, approving un-audited. Actuals, is this, are we regularly late on this? Are there any? I see we have our FICMAT folks here. Is this, is this something that impacts our. Our reputation with CDE and in terms of how they're looking at us and monitoring us? And I just want to know, is this a regular thing in terms of us being late on this in addition to maybe being slightly off?
No, we are not regularly late. This is the first time, I believe, for the district. And we were in close communication, both with our fiscal experts who also have been in touch with CDE and have supported us in this decision. You know, ultimately, it is a narrow window of time any year to close the books within the deadline. But it was particularly challenging just because we also had the process of posting payroll to the financial system and trying to make it be as accurate as possible. So these were very unusual circumstances, and we had both our fiscal experts and CD supporting us in that decision.
So I think my questions might be more superintendent, so you may be able to relax for just a minute. So my, I know that these, this predates you, like this is, you know, this is last year. But one of the questions I have about special ed, especially going forward right now, it relates to our consent calendar. So if it's okay, if I can just draw a connection, because there are a number of contracts coming up for special ed. Contracted relationships, contracting for services. So I guess when I see, because I don't like, and Megan has heard this before. I am not comfortable applauding savings that come from lack of delivery of programs to schools and curtailment of hiring. So what I'm wanting to know is given, it's not so much about the numbers in here, but where we are right now in this moment and going forward. Are we looking up at shoring up those programs, filling those positions? Or is the kind of contracting that I'm seeing coming through the consent calendar occurring in the settlements occurring because of lack of ability to provide service?
So yes, we are trying to staff up. No, we haven't successfully been able to do so. And then without looking at them closely offhand, I think, yes. Some of them are definitely in response to needing to either provide services that we haven't been able to provide. I can think of, I know one of them in particular that is exactly for that reason. And then also when we have had to settle, do settlements is because to make up for that. And so, you know, it will be in, you know, the staffing, the available staff is going to be. And our staffing shortage is going to be an issue for a while, but how we organize ourselves in light of limited staffing is something that we'll need to plan for when. Doing our budget and personnel for next year as well, and where we're prioritizing putting the limited folks that we have.
Okay, because I'm just going to underscore that. You know, the comments related to our goals and our vision and values, if if we are not figuring out how to shore up. Resources and deliver on programs that are going to be benefiting our students, then there is a disconnect. And it, it will be performative, and I don't think anyone sitting here wants it to be. Then I, then I have kind of like a bring me up to speed question, and maybe this, this, I don't know who this is better directed to. So this, I mean, these reports are for LCFF funding, right? I mean, we're just looking at LCFF.
No, this is actually for the entire district budget.
Okay, the entire district budget. So when I was looking at the, well, here, let me, so there's the, they're so big, the district one. The percent of current cost of education expended for classroom compensation is meant to be fifty-five percent or hired for unified school districts. We're at fifty-five point twenty-one. And so I, I just wanted some framing around that. If that is how we've been, where we want to be. And then my secondary question goes to the county one where every student succeeds act, the S M maintenance of effort of determination was not met. And so if someone could frame that for me and what that means and what our thoughts are about or around that. And I apologize, I did send questions for for response, but I didn't get them out till yesterday.
So one, I just want to highlight that the fifty-five percent represents classroom teachers and other support staff. So that could include parent educators as well. And I would say that as a school district, we do provide additional services like because things like PEEF, SLAM, which includes classroom support teachers, certainly, but all the other types of expenses creates a larger budget overall. So the proportion of the classroom staff is actually smaller because we do make these other investments as a district. So it actually hasn't been uncommon for SFUSD to hover around that fifty-five percent. And a lot of times we end up needing to identify staff that could be part of that calculation who are in the county fund. We might actually move them to the district fund to show that, like, actually, we give ourselves credit for having provided that classroom support. So I think the main point is just that we do tend to hover around that number. And it can be a matter of just looking to see, okay, what are our overall resources, resources between a district and a county? And how do we make it, make it work? So I think in that end, doing things like increasing salaries for our educators will increase the costs of those classroom support. So I think that will actually make it easier for us in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, for example, moving forward. For meeting the MOE, there are revenue repercussions if you don't meet it. I actually need to do a follow-up with staff to see what the impact would be. My understanding from talking with the team is that we're looking at upwards of five hundred thousand dollars of an impact if if a sanction were to be applied to the district for not meeting that requirement.
And then can can someone just explain the requirement?
So it is that fifty-five percent of the district or the county offices staff are, represent classroom supports, so teachers or parent educators. So thinking, let's think about the zero-based budgeting framework of those most direct services in the classroom should be fifty-five percent of the investments that we make overall as a district and a county office.
Okay, so and then if if you, if in this case, it's the county office operations are not meeting that threshold and therefore there is a financial repercussion.
And we will need, I'll need follow-up with staff and we'll, we'll update the board on what the impacts would be.
Thank you. I have a question, more so maybe a comment. I just want to plus one what Commissioner Matomany raised, and I think many of us, not all of us, you know, acknowledging and recognizing the, you know, staff positions that continue to remain open is that we are not delivering those programs for our students and recognizing the workforce crisis and shortage. And I, you know, if I haven't acknowledged it tonight, I just need to publicly name that I recognize that payroll, empower, lack of our ability right now to fully resolve those outstanding issues is directly impacting our ability to recruit, retain our staff members, period. I have a question for Mr. Duchan, our fiscal expert. Given that there, we've requested this extension because we were needing to line up the year end between the payroll, the financial systems and, and, you know, and thank you, Megan, for explaining that process. If you could share with the board right now, what are some of your concerns or things that we need to be working with our, the superintendent as we look ahead to the interim reports? You know, submission both in December, end of the calendar year and into the first quarter of twenty twenty-three.
There we go. A look in the rearview mirror. So there, if you take your home budget, they're how you spend your money. It's, that's what it is. You can't change it. That's how each budget category came out. And for any school district, that would be fluid in a number of, in a year anyway. So as you look forward, I think the biggest concern is what is the district doing to get rid of that ongoing deficit because that deficit still exists. And, you know, we've had those conversations with staff, staff understands that. And I think that's going to make, there needs to be a very close look at staffing, which is ironic because you're understaffed, but you're also declining enrollment. So in the end, if you get to a year where you don't have, where you have a deficit, where you actually deficit spending and you can't cover it with other expenses, that's when it gets serious. So I think that's what to look for in the interim report and what staff advises in terms of future year budgeting. Does that make sense? So the interim report is a projection. This is a look at what actually was there. And I think as Dr. Wayne pointed out, there, there are two very different reports. This, this report is sort of agnostic as to how you spent the money. It doesn't go into the budget categories other than you spent this much on classified salaries, this much on benefits. But as you look forward, you don't have that, you have to be subjective about each of those categories. So as you look at your interim report, it will be important to look at how the money is projected to be spent over the next three years.
Thank you.
Sorry, just, so going back to my, the county question, it just says MOE not met. What, what is our percentage? Do we, I mean, I mean, if you don't know, it's fine. You can get it to me later. I just was curious, like, how far away we are.
Yeah, I apologize for not having that detail. It's a, it's a very fair question. I wish they'd had it on the form.
Commissioner Ison Ward.
Sorry, just one other, a quick follow-up question. I understand that the savings slash not savings are certainly are because of these open positions or programs that didn't get funded. Is there any possibility that this is empower inaccuracies? That these numbers are just wrong because the empower, that the system isn't working?
So I'm going to, it's a twofold answer. So we can account for positions and so do know that some of, that that is related to positions. The audited actuals may reveal there's other either over expenditures or over payments or under payments that were captured in the unaudited actuals. We, and so, yeah, so I think even whatever the over, whatever the audited actuals reveal and a further refinement of that, there's still for sure savings identified because we did not have, you know, we didn't spend as much as projected on personnel.
Okay, colleagues, I'm going to wrap up. And are we going to do appreciation?
Maybe approve them first.
So we will take a roll call vote since we had the motion and the second.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomany?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes. Thank you. And now I just do want to, I do want to appreciate Elliot Duchan first. He's been a very helpful partner in providing clear and straightforward advice in his role as fiscal expert. But then I'll share my appreciation in my time here, having worked with Megan and her commitment and dedication to the district as an employee and as a parent. And so I think I was always, what I've been struck and appreciated, I've always kept that in mind. You know, it's, it's the forty-nine thousand plus students we serve, include your own, that is behind all these numbers that you're presenting. And so thank you for your commitment to our students.
Thank you. And I just want to also close. Thank you again so much, Megan, for your service. You are a true public servant at heart. I know it has not been easy. I still remember the long, long hours of, in the throes of newly looking at the financial sustainability for this district while in COVID, while thinking about how are we keeping our students, our staff, safe and just the most difficult times. So I just wanted to extend my thanks to you. And I wish you all the luck back at the city and county. And just like Dr. Wayne mentioned, I know that, and you get to continue as an SFUSD parent now. And just wanted to express deep gratitude for your work and best of luck.
And I just want to thank you because I felt during the pandemic, you were a staff member and a leader that really showed up for families and the community, trying to answer questions, trying to be as transparent as possible. And I felt that when I was on PEEF CAC very much. And, you know, you were willing and open to taking hard questions and come, and returning with answers to the best of your ability. And so I know it was really challenging, but you are very, very visible. Wow, I just got a little bit emotional because it kind of, like I had flashes of conversations we had during some of the darkest days during that period. And I really, really, like, I felt we were communicating as, as parents in addition to your role here at the, at the district. And you really, you really showed up. So thank you very much and for your continued service. And you will be serving the, the community in your new position as well, from what I hear. So keep calm and carry on.
And then you can come and complain to us at the board and say, you're not doing your finances right because, you know, as a parent. But echo all these comments. I just want to say thank you. It's been, it's been really an honor to work with you.
Likewise, I wish you the best going forward. Thank you.
And maybe you'll get some rest, just a tiny.
Well, ironically, this is my week off, but no, but I actually, my family thinks that was crazy to want to present, but I really did want to say goodbye and thank you. And so just all the more reason why I appreciate your heartfelt comments. And I can't help but think that the conversation with this board, not all the same members, but with this body began three years ago with this presentation that we saw a hole. And I wasn't anticipating needing to play, you know, that role. And just, it has been a journey of a lifetime. I mean, we'll see what comes my way after this, but just, it has been such an important learning experience for me and an opportunity to give, you're right, I, I live to be a public servant and thank you for this opportunity. Now you got me cheered up, but so, thank you.
All right, so we will go to item, action item three, two, two, ten, two, five, P, SP three, the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two annual audit extension request. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved second. Thank you. So this is a request for the annual audit to submit it at a later date. This is allowable within the regulations. So we are still following the rules. And similar to what Ms. Wallace presented previously, is in our closing the books with this new system. It took a while to get the unaudited actuals complete. So that's necessitating the, those who are doing our auditing to wanting a little more time for the audited actuals. So, but in order to do that, we just need to publicly get board approval to do that extension. I think that covers it. And then if there's questions, Ms. Wallace can share more.
I'll need to open up for public comment.
There are none in person.
Please raise your hand if you care to share your public comment on this item.
Yes, I did have a quick question regarding this budget item and approving of the final audit for twenty twenty-one. During the second district PTA meeting, I actually asked Laney Moltoiti about PEEF CAC money being used for Galileo High School football field. And the response was that it was about forty, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And just would like to confirm what that price was, since that money was actually taken out of PEEF and should have came, come out of facilities money instead of out of PEEF money, which also reduced the amount that was available for critical services like language pathways, A to G support, as well as mental health services for our students who needed it most during COVID.
Thank you. That does conclude our virtual public comment for this item.
Okay, any comments from colleagues or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomany?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
And President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Item number four, twenty-two, ten, two, five, SP four, tentative agreement between SF Unified School District and United Educators of San Francisco regarding the re-opener successor agreement. Like to ask for a motion in a second.
A second.
Dr. Wayne?
Thank you. We are very pleased to bring forward this item. And again, representing an investment in our educators in SFUSD. So like to welcome our interim head of labor, Sam Bass, for a very brief overview of the settlement. It's a salary plus a few issues around working conditions that we've addressed.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Great to see you. I am here for recommended action to approve the tentative agreement between San Francisco Unified School District and United Educators of San Francisco regarding the re-opener successor agreement.
Yeah, and we can just celebrate even more that it's a six percent salary increase plus additional prep time as well as core subs, Edmore schools to support our most high-needs student populations.
Thank you. Like to open for public comment.
Thank you. We have two, Chris Claus and Cassandra Correio.
Hi, I'm Chris Claus, a sped teacher at Washington High School. Thank you for finally bringing this agreement to a board meeting for a vote. It's been ready for over a month. If I waited this long to grade student work after it was due, I would be in violation of my principal's expectations. I would be in violation of my principal's expectations. I was on the bargaining team and we worked hard to get this agreement ready in time for a September meeting. So the extra wait time has really made me more frustrated with my district. But putting that aside, we needed this raise a long time ago. Forcing us to wait this long on top of the painful nightmare has been a new lower level of disrespect than I thought was possible. So I'm asking you, please, to pass this agreement and get this raised to people immediately and correctly. Get the sub-program started and get us all that extra prep time. Maybe it will be enough to keep some of us here or attract more people until we can bargain our new contract in the spring. It's the least you can do. Help us both the schools that our students and educators deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, without burying, repeating any of that. Um, we're really glad that this is going to be activated. Uh, it's a very needed improvement on a long fight. Um, that is, you know, a decade old, truly, the root of, of underpaying here in San Francisco Unified for educators, particularly those of most, um, vulnerable, which is our parent educators. And in this agreement that you're, um, hopefully ratifying, um, this will also be the first time that the parent educators are attached to the exact same amount across level. In the future, there's ways in which we believe that addressing the under-resourced departments that you've discussed today is in large part able to be solved in the sort of effort that we're doing right now, which is folks love doing the work that we do. I went to Burton today and I got to see every grade level of student I've taught in the last five years. Um, I love doing this job, um, but when we make it unsustainable by having to cover classes, disproportionate numbers, not having prep time in order to do the work, the actual work that teachers do before we get in front of the students. Um, not having substitutes, again, another additional thing, and then not getting paid enough. Um, and while we can talk about it being a national and federal issue, there are actions and things that we can take right here at home to start to address this. Uh, so this is only the beginning. This is the first step of a long journey that we're gonna take, uh, to work together to fix this. You've heard, hopefully, you've heard for over a, a year, some of you, and Superintendent Wayne, for, since, before you even took the job, um, that UESF has committed partners in making sure that our district is not just, uh, a great place to work. Right? It, that it's a great place to learn and to stay working. And the way that we do that is by working together to make sure that agreements like these and improvements keep going, um, so that we have the colleagues that we need to do this work. Um, because for every one of those individuals, you heard who's leading tonight, that's more stress for that staff and more stress for the students. Uh, the core sub program was a great idea at the time, and at this point, it almost seems like it just might not meet the mark. Um, that doesn't mean it's not gonna work well where it works. Um, but we have to run to catch up. We're in the sprint right now. And so looking forward to this, appreciating this, and the continued concerted committed effort to solving the root causes of many of the issues that we're dealing with, um, in your students' classrooms and in the colleagues' classrooms where we go to, to try and help each other out. Thanks.
That concludes in person.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this tentative agreement. Vivette?
Um, yes, I just wanted to let the board know that you guys have literally spent more time as a board of ed, um, in the last four months on that dog and pony show called Vision Values, Goals, and Guard Rails, without really truly engaging in, um, public comments and community, um, as was stated by almost ninety-nine percent of the responders. Um, you guys really needed to have gone back to the community instead of voting yes across the board. But since you did, this is a halfway step in making our teachers whole. And you guys should have spent these last couple of months figuring out how you can get teacher pay and paraprofessional pay, as well as our support staff, up to the rates of, um, Marin County and all of our San Mateo, um, Alameda, and some of our neighboring districts who actually pay educators way more. And for all of the stuff that our San Francisco Unified School District educators, staff, and administrators have been through, that should have been your first priority, not your last.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to commend the superintendent, um, and the Board of Education for taking the step to ensure that our educators are paid, um, given the pay rates around the counties that surround us. So good job with that. Um, please continue to ensure that all different classified and certificated staff are considered as you all move on. And, um, I'm really excited that you have included instructional assistance in this. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment for this item.
Super, uh, I was gonna say supervisors, commissioners, Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you so much. Um, I just have a couple of questions. First of all, um, congratulations, uh, to our team and to UBSF's bargaining team. I really appreciate, appreciate the work on this. Um, I just have a couple of questions around the dedicated, uh, course substitute programs from referenced. Um, it says it's a pilot program. Is there a limit to this pilot in terms of how many years?
No, there hasn't been a limit discussed, but, um, we are eager to get it started this year to see how we can let it grow for, for the coming years.
And then for, thank you. And, uh, it's for tier-three schools. And is it proportionate to how many students are in the school? Or is it one, uh, course sub for every tier-three school, no matter the size of the school?
It's, it's just one for now. Um, while we look at the pilot and look at the results of the pilot to see what adjustments can be made, uh, quantitatively, the other.
And then we, we have had this type of program in the past, twice at least in the last twenty years. One was a equity release teacher, which was essentially the same thing. Um, where they would be able to also release teachers who were going to professional development and substitute. So it wasn't a matter of a substitute not showing up. It was u- utilizing this person to be able to cover classrooms so that teachers could get professional development or do other things. Is that part of the work that can be done?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks. I just wanna appreciate, uh, the board for approving this and also our, um, U E partners for, uh, working on this. So there was an urgency to complete this at the beginning of the year. So, uh, uh, our educators can focus on educating. As part of the process, what you, uh, included in this was our financial disclosures to the state, uh, about this, which is what took, uh, and I explained that in a, a communication, what took a bit of time for this. And we are going to need some time to work on implementing it. Um, but we wanna make sure that everybody, um, uh, you know, gets this in, in an accurate form. And so, um, a- again, I appreciate the partnership to make this happen. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, demonstrate how much, uh, we appreciate our, uh, educators in SFUSD.
Yes, thank you. Um, item number five, twenty-two-ten, two-five-S-P-five, the tentative agreement on collective bargaining agreement between SFUSD and United Administrators of San Francisco for a successor agreement.
So moved.
Yes, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
Second.
Uh, thank you. And this is a, an agreement, um, uh, with UA, uh, that is on other areas of, um, the contract. This, uh, we're coming back to the table around compensation. So, uh, I'll, uh, present again. Uh, Sam Bass, our interim head of labor relations, to speak to what, uh, this agreement entails.
Good evening again, commissioners. As Dr. Wayne said, I'm here to recommend approval of the tentative agreement on collective bargaining, uh, between SFUSD and United Administrators of San Francisco, uh, for the successor agreement.
Thank you. Like to open for public comment.
There are none in person.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this tentative agreement. Seeing no hands raised.
Because all the ministers are gonna get up in about five hours, um, six hours. Like to ask for any comments from the board or board members? Um, Commissioner Shu?
I noticed that there's a suspension of the, um, um, professional development funds for this year. How is that going to impact, um, our curriculum and instruction delivery?
Yeah, Commissioner Shu, I'm gonna defer to my colleague, Ms. Hout.
Uh, Mr. Bass is doing an amazing job on these agreements. He did not actually negotiate because he was still in HR. Um, so that particular fund doesn't actually impact the professional development that we provide in the district. It speaks to a fund that, um, uh, administrators were able to go outside the district and access professional development and then seek reimbursement for it. What we've agreed to in this agreement is to, um, take back those funds and in exchange disperse a stipend, which has actually already been paid and was part of an agreement that the board approved in May. So this is wrapping up all of the terms, some of which you have, we have, um, signed off on in May. So the short answer to your question is it doesn't impact professional development offered by curriculum and instruction.
Actually, um, that's not exactly, sorry if I wasn't clear on my question, but, um, I wasn't asking about our professional development per se, but just professional development in general, not do, not doing that or suspending that for this year. How is that gonna impact the effectiveness of our administrators in their work?
So I don't have the exact numbers, but, um, historically, very few administrators took advantage of this fund.
I can attest to that.
Yes, which was part of the reason that United Educators wanted to see us use these funds in a different way to benefit their members.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, questions, roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you so much. Now we will move to, um, item H, consent calendar. So I want to note that, uh, public comment, members of the public may comment on any matter on the consent calendar, but members of the public shall not be permitted to sever agenda items for discussions. Are there any items withdrawn by, um, actually, I'm sorry, before I do that, is there, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
Any items withdrawn by the superintendent?
Um, yes, uh, there is one item. Let me find. Ah, um, board, uh, H forty-four, board policy five-one-one-one, um, on admissions will be withdrawn. Um, we want to follow up on a few, uh, inquiries around the policy.
Okay, thank you. So we have Mr. Steele, item forty-four, that will be withdrawn. Any items, um, removed by the board are severed for discussion? Seeing none. So like to roll call vote with the exception, with the removal of item number forty-four.
We do have one person for public comment.
Public comment?
Yes, alright. Actually, it's Vivette, if she's still online.
Vivette?
Yes, um, I wanna make a public comment regarding, um, use of the Prop-A bonds, um, just from two thousand sixteen. I just wanna reiterate that some of these payments that are going, um, towards fixing things, um, and different school sites. I just want to elevate the fact that this district continued to not, um, pay for renovations to over twenty-three school sites that were listed in the original bond. So as you guys look forward to going through basically that facilities management report that the superintendent and Don presented, um, at the last board meeting, that you guys really consider those schools that were not, um, funded the last time that were supposed to be, and ensure that they're actually, um, their names are actually placed in the new bond, and that it's actually says shall and not just must or may, because this is now becoming an issue where school sites are waiting decades for these improvements and being told that they're gonna be done, like at, um, Buena Vista Horseman, Malcolm X, Carver, and a lot of these schools that are set to, that you guys may have to make decisions on whether or not you wanna close them, which I feel is an equity issue. And these are some things that you guys could have included in your guardrails, but you didn't.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment for this item.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Thank you. Excluding number forty-four that was withdrawn. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Moving to consent, I, item I, consent calendar, retroactive contracts. Like to have a motion in a second for the contracts for the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Like to open for public comment?
Alita Fisher?
Hello, um, I'm here to comment on item number two, the PAC contract. Um, uh, thank you for bringing this contract forward. Um, uh, my questions are around the proposed outcomes of service, and I quote, "The intended outcome of this work is to engage the parent community and seek input on the district's budget and L cap." Now, the PAC is so much more than this, first of all. They have subcommittees that work with various teams within the district. They empower parents. Um, they teach, teach parents how to speak the district's language and the lingo, which, no small feat there. But anyway, um, as we've said multiple times tonight, guardrail number one is about effective decision-making. The superintendent will not make major changes without utilizing a process that includes meaningful consultation with parents and guardians who will be impacted by these decisions at the inception, adoption, and review. Now, committee meetings aren't happening. Board of Ed meetings are limited to three hours. Comment is one minute. Public comment can't be responded to. So if we're limiting the scope of the PAC, how are we expecting parents to engage? This scope seems overly narrow for the work that the, the, the PAC has historically done. Where are we expecting engagement?
That concludes public comment in person.
Do you have a virtual public comment? Vivette?
I'd like to echo everything Alita said. I think that it's, um, very problematic that this district suspended all of these committees at the beginning of the summer. And we're just right now, we're starting to even get some of these contracts signed and getting some of these committees fully stocked. And I think that that's also, uh, lended towards the poor turnout that you guys received from the visions, values, goals, and guardrails. Without proper parent engagement and making people feel like it's actually a conversation and a two-way conversation, then things would be better. I actually attended some of those, uh, one of the meetings and where the superintendent gave us kind of a history of who he was and talked a little bit about what he wanted to do with the district, but there wasn't any kind of meaningful exchange. We were told to write things on a sticky note and put it on the wall, and literally that was collected as evidence. That's not meaningful engagement to our communities. There were some parents who got up and talked about bullying, or, you know, there were like probably four or five parents who got up to speak, but that's not meaningful engagement. There's a lot of issues going on through this district, and there's a lot of people who have wisdom, expertise, and how to reach out to these disadvantaged communities. And when you don't support the full work of, um, groups like the PAC, then you're gonna continue to have people upset coming to these meetings and speaking one way and not getting that resolved.
Brandy?
Hi, I just wanna echo what the two previous callers said. I, we've had, think about this, at this board meeting, um, there have been three protests because parents and community- um, there have been three protests because parents and community members are unhappy. Um, narrowing the scope of the PAC, uh, it just seems like there have been so many comments to try to stifle parent voice, whether it's been getting rid of oversight committees, limiting public comment. Um, the repeated um demands for civility when um so many things aren't, just aren't getting done, and our, their families and aren't being treated with respect. There's been no funding of um the QT PAC. Um, think about how that feels to families of queer kids, especially when you, when you think about what is going on in Texas. So um, I just urge you, I hope that you really take to heart a lot of the unhappy feedback. This isn't directed at anybody personally, but when you continually take away parents' voice, people feel really happy, and our school district doesn't function as well as it should.
Thank you. Yvette?
Hi, good evening, thank you so much. Um, I I just sort of want to say, you know, uh, obviously, I I think it's great to have PACs, I think it's great to have parent engagement. But I think there's also a a real caution in making sure that we don't just let it be the parents that um everyone wants to hear from. Even tonight, I think we keep hearing from a lot of the same voices. And I'd like to see more oversight on any PACs that are involved. I think I believe that proper parent engagement only happens because of these PACs that are within the district is a real hazard. I think it's a real mistake. I caution anyone to believe that any particular organization can actually represent all voices. I would hope that any of the PACs are doing more engagement and getting more voices into these meetings and doing more outreach. I think if you really look around, you'll find a lot of people have no idea what a PAC is. They don't hear about it at their S S C meetings, they don't hear about it from their P T As. They aren't even sure what a PAC or any of these other organizations are. So if the PAC really wants to do the work to really get into the community, or if we really want to continue these conversations, there needs to be better oversight, there needs to be better engagement, because it's not reaching everyone in a way that I think a lot of the same voices that keep talking at these meetings believe it may be doing so. So by all means, I I appreciate this conversation, but let's just be very careful about really recognizing who are calling in and who in whatever particular position are really making sure that we have a broad range of voices calling in to speak on behalf of parents throughout this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any items withdrawn um or corrected by the superintendent?
Uh, no.
Alright, any items severed by the board or superintendent? For discussion or vote tonight? I'm going to pull item I two for a separate vote and discussion. So I'd like to move forward for the roll call vote, excluding items I two.
Thank you, excluding I two. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
So at this time, I wanted to raise item number two for submission, retroactive contract by the Business Services Division with Community Initiatives. Were there any for discussion?
Could you, could you just talk about the, the, if there have been any changes to the scope of work and kind of the expectations of what kind of was previously done versus the current expectation going into the year and just kind of, I think to just kind of make that plan for myself. Um, uh, yeah, so this item is brought forward as a retroactive item because um, the Community Initiatives has been the fiscal sponsor for the PAC coordination. Uh, and so that it was expected that the PAC coordination would continue, and so the work started um, it without uh, you know, researching why the, you know, we don't want contracts to start without work and yeah, without, I mean, we don't want work starting without contracts in place, but this was work that has been ongoing each year. But then in reviewing it, we recognize that there was um adjustments to the scope that we uh needed to make and have been going through that process, but are um uh, but the work has been happening, so in order to to um uh compensate uh and uh pay the invoice from Community Initiatives, we needed to bring forward uh a contract. So there have been some adjustments to the to the scope, but if there's further consideration that's um uh the board wants to take, we you definitely want to make sure we're able to pay for services rendered, continue it, and then we could, you know, possibly consider uh um, you know, what other adjustments to the scope we might want to make to address uh where we're going as a district.
I I guess this is a follow-up, is the work that was removed from this scope of work, where does it exist now and kind of how is it being held towards execution?
Um, yeah, so we're, I think the short answer is we have um the board uh approved an L cap coordinator position, and uh, you know, recognizing that there needed to be it's kind of overall district coordinated effort on the L cap process. And so uh that position, that person has just come on board, and so we're working through what that looks like specifically. Uh, but it's definitely, want to make sure that the district has responsibility for engaging with the families. Um, and uh, and around the L cap and that we're um, we're working on that process rather than uh, uh, you know, having an outside uh organization do that.
There are additional questions?
Yeah, so if we uh um okay, so this item is being brought forward for the retroactive uh payment, so what might, if we want to still have that further discussion, uh, I'm looking at our general counsel, what might, uh, how might the, the um uh, what might be an amended motion, because we do need to make sure we're following through on our uh, on our commitment when there has been somebody who's been working uh up until this point.
So I think the board has a few choices. Um, obviously, you could move forward with the vote yes or no. Uh, if the board votes no, that's going to present some issues for somebody who's already performed work um that hasn't been paid, so um, if you wanted to proceed that way, I think we should have a conversation about that so that I could advise you in closed session. The other option is you could table this until your next meeting, or um it, we don't know that Community Initiatives would agree to this term, but we could move an amended contract um for a term to end on November thirtieth, which would permit us to um at least pay for the work that has already been completed.
Can I? I like to move uh the the second option that our general counsel proposed to amend the term to what, November thirtieth? Why not October thirtieth?
Uh, that, I would have to look to the superintendent. I don't know what work has been contemplated. Um, would, would October thirtieth um present any issues for us if we simply cut it off in a week or less than a week?
Um, yeah, I think we would, you know, definitely want to have the conversation. Um, so that's why November thirty, I think, think would make, make sense.
Then I move to amend the terms of this contract to end November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second for that?
And that's with the idea that the, the rest of the contract is being tabled for additional discussion or not? I, I think that is at the pleasure of the board. The contract could come back in, in its existing form or in a different form um after the board has had discussion.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Any additional questions? Okay, roll call vote.
On the motion?
Correct.
Excuse me, a minute, the motion on the amendment, excuse me. Commissioner Alexander?
Uh, no.
Commissioner, Vice President Bogus?
No.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
President Lamb? Yes. Um, Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
So just for clarification, that this would allow us to still review and bring back?
Yes, but for the time being, the contract would be amended to terminate on November thirtieth, and that would happen unless the board takes subsequent action.
So there would be a subsequent action that could follow?
The, the air is a possibility for that, but right now, that is not on the table.
Yes.
Uh, that's four, four eyes, three nays.
So just so the record is clear, the contract is approved as, as amended to term, so that it will terminate on November thirtieth.
Yep, that was.
That wasn't even, yes.
Oh. Yeah, so that was.
Okay, so the contract was approved, amended to November thirtieth, so that allows us to pay for work done. Um, and then that allows us to continue, look at the scope to make sure we're clear on um the, addressing any questions around the scope to potentially bring back beyond November thirtieth.
You got it.
Item number K, Board Members Report, Special Meeting um on September Oc- um Saturday, October fifteenth. Um, informational item was a governance workshop, which we talked extensively tonight. Like to ask if there are any reports from board delegates to membership organizations, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, thank you. Um, Superintendent Wayne and I attended the Council of Great City Schools Conference in Orlando this past week. Um, and I did send to, I hope everybody got it, I sent everybody uh a link to a lot of documents um that covered the information we were given as for part of the board of directors for the organization. Um, and so if anybody wants me to walk through the information, I'm happy to do it with you, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Any other um board reports? Seeing none. Informational items, I want to list the initial proposals from United Administrators of San Francisco. It's posted to the agenda, and it's in the initial proposals um of U A S F. And at this time, um, I'd like to recess, um, for us to go back into closed session, and we will come back to open session before um formal adjournment.
I think we can stay here.
Yes.
We'll reconvene to open session with the readout of ten twenty-five twenty-two closed session. Uh, first thing we have is a vote on student expulsion matters. I move approval of expulsion agreement of one high school student, matter number two zero two-two dash two zero two-three dash number three from the district for the remainder of the fall semester. Twenty-twenty-two suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring twenty-twenty-three. Can I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez? Commissioner Wiseman Ward? President Lamb?
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Uh, I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one high school student, matter number two zero two-two dash two zero two-three dash number four from the school district for the remaining of the fall semester twenty-twenty-two suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring twenty-twenty-three. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Wiseman Ward, President Lamb?
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. I will go to item two, report from closed session. Before we report out for the closed session for the regular meeting, we do want to correct a misstatement on the report out from our special meeting held earlier. During our special meeting closed session before the board meeting, the board by a vote of six yeses and one no vote, the no vote being Vice President Bogus, the board authorized the general counsel to settle the matter in regards to, I read that, right? Alright, Jewel Labs Incorporated Marketing Sales Practice and Product Liability Litigation Federal District Court of the Northern District of California, case number three, colon nineteen dash M D dash O two nine one three dash W H O, up to the stipulated amount. Okay. Uh, and then the report out from our closed session after the board meeting, in one matter of public employee discipline dismissal or release, the board by a vote of six yeses and one no, with Commissioner Wiseman Ward voting no, approved a settlement and release agreement up to the stipulated amount. In five matters of anticipated litigation, the board gave direction to legal counsel. And with that, I believe we will pass back to President.
Thank you, Vice President Bogus. Um, we will now formally adjourn at twelve-thirty-one A M.